Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting of Thursday, September 25th. And obviously, tonight, we're at a different location. We're here at the Dartmouth Middle School, given the number of people that we were expecting here this evening.
Could you speak to this in voice or microphone?
I will do so. So, the first thing I'd like to announce is that this meeting is being recorded by Dartmouth Community Media, and also that our next meeting of the Board of Appeals is scheduled for Thursday, October 23rd of this year. The location, as of now, has not yet been determined, and there's always also a possibility that the date could be changed. But for now, our next scheduled meeting is for October 23rd. Moving on to the public, actually, we haven't done some formal things. So, it's a different venue, so I guess I'm a little off from not knowing that we didn't have a flag, but we do have one. There it is. Alright, so, as a usual routine, we always stand and we pledge allegiance to the flag at the beginning of all of our meetings. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd ask that we all remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our soldiers, past and present. So now, moving on to the public hearings portion of tonight's meeting, the first matter we have, and it's a continued matter, it's comprehensive permit ZCMP-25-1. The petitioner applicant is Paul Cusson. The owner is Bliss Investors LLC. The subject property is located at 970 Tucker Road. It's MAP 46, Lot 2. It's located within the single residence B district. The matter's been legally advertised. We've already had a waiving of the reading of the butters list at the last meeting. In this case, just as a review for the people that weren't here last time, and also for any viewers at home who were not able to see the last meeting, the petitioner is seeking a comprehensive permit pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40B, Section 20 through 30, and the Comprehensive Permit Guideline 760 CMR 56.00 for Mass. General Law and Dartmouth Zoning Board Regulations. The petitioner applicant is proposing a development on approximately 56.3 acres to be known as Residences at Hawthorne, to be located at 970 Tucker Road. The development will have a total of 147 homes, 116.7 single-family homes, and 30 duplex units consisting of 15 buildings. Within the 147-unit development, 37 units will be designated as affordable and sold to households that do not exceed 80% of the AREAR median income, AMI adjusted for family size. The property is located at 970 Tucker Road in the single residence B district. The petitioner applicant is requesting waivers. Now, I'm not going to go through all these waivers because there's a long list of them, and as we go along, they will be brought up. Now, just as, basically, sort of a preamble to tonight's meeting, which, and I don't want to sound redundant because I did read this the last time, but again, this is for people that were not present at the last meeting, and also for any viewers at home that were not able to actually view the meeting. In Massachusetts, Chapter 40B is a state law that allows developers to receive waivers from local zoning regulations to build affordable housing developments. The primary purpose of 40B is to increase the supply of affordable housing by bypassing restrictive local zoning ordinances. Each city and town in Massachusetts has a subsidized housing inventory, which is the percentage of their housing stock that is affordable. Towns that have 10% or more of their housing stock dedicated to affordable housing are exempt from 40B requirements. However, if a municipality doesn't have enough affordable housing, it may not be able to reject a 40B project. And unfortunately, we have not met that safe harbor. Developers apply for a comprehensive permit, which gives them approval from multiple local boards in a single streamlined process. The law aims to create regional housing fairness by allowing communities to plan for and meet their fair share of housing needs. The two hearings that are on for this evening are for comprehensive permits, applications filed on the Chapter 40B. The process and the role of the board is very different than it is for special permits and variances. The board stands in the shoes of all local boards, which includes all permitting boards. The applicant is not required to obtain any other local permits or approvals from any other local board or departments, and the board cannot require this. The board also cannot condition the permit on the applicant coming back to the board for other permits. The board's primary task is to apply the consistent with local needs standard of review established by Chapter 40B. This consists of weighing local concerns against the regional need for affordable housing. The board may deny a project, refuse to waive local bylaws, or impose conditions upon a project only where it finds that there is a valid local concern that outweighs the housing need. Local concerns must be caused by the project. They cannot be based on a pre-existing condition. In addition, concerns like municipal fiscal impacts, school enrollment, cannot be considered. Housing need: If the town has not achieved 10% affordable housing units on the state's subsidized housing inventory, there is a rebuttable presumption that there is a regional need for affordable housing that outweighs all local concerns. Dartmouth is currently at 7.81%. The board has the authority to waive any local bylaws and regulations that are necessary for the construction of the project. As noted, the board is required to grant these waivers unless there is a local concern that outweighs the housing need. The board is not obligated to grant waivers that are not necessary for the construction of the project. The board has the right to have the project peer reviewed at the developer's expense. The peer reviewers are only permitted to review the project and materials filed by the developer. They cannot undertake their own studies. Peer review of the project's pro forma is available only in a specific situation. The board has to propose conditions, give the developer reasonable time to review the conditions, and the developer notifies the board that the conditions would render the project uneconomic or feasible. So, I just wanted to make sure that I set this out so that you can understand the constraints that we, as members of this board, are faced with here. This is not our usual role. This is an unusual role. I think I've been on this board for 10 years, and I think I've seen 40B projects maybe twice or three times the most. One of them was a very small one for a disability-type unit. It was only seven or eight units. But the last one that we had was a very large one that's on Route 6. It's called the Preserve, and I think there are 286 units, and we granted that, and that's under construction. And that one was granted back, probably about three, four years ago, possibly, probably about four years ago, and that was for 286 units. That's where the old Jules U cycle, for anyone who doesn't know. If you drive by there, you'll see a lot of the construction that's going on there. It's a lot, mostly site work at this point. So, again, we have certain constraints that we need to follow, and I know everyone here has concerns, and I am going to give you an opportunity. Not everyone's going to be able to speak tonight, but this is a process. It's not all going to happen in one evening. It's not going to happen in two or three evenings. This is going to go on for a little bit, because there are a lot of different things that need to be reviewed. So, I'm going to have, and I'm going to grant everyone an opportunity, who wants to speak, to speak. First, we're going to hear from, this evening, the petitioner's expert. They have one who's an engineer in traffic, who's provided us a report. This is the report. He's provided us this, and I believe it or not, I've read through most of it, not to say that I understand all of it. And that's why we have an expert here as well, that we've engaged at their expense, who's going to provide us some guidance and answer many questions that many of you may have, that we want to make sure that we have the answer. So, at this time, I'm going to call upon the petitioner or their expert. Excuse me. Well, I was going to do that later on when we do the public hearings, but thank you. Alright? Keep interrupting. No problem, really, okay? Because I don't want to forget anything, and we will do that when we open the public hearings, I will mention those. So, at this time, I'm going to call upon the petitioner. They're going to present their expert, and they're going to explain to us how they feel the impact will be on traffic if there's 147 units constructed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul Cusson, Delphic Associates. At the last meeting, we had agreed that this evening we'd be discussing traffic, so we have hired Vanessa and Associates, Mr. Jeffrey Dirk, who performed the traffic study, and he will go over in detail, as much as you would like, the report, and will give a brief summary up on the screen so people can understand the development. I'd just like to add that I've worked with Mr. Dirk on several developments, and he is highly sought after as a traffic engineer, and in fact, he is used by many municipalities to do review. So, with that, I'd just like to introduce Mr. Dirk and let him discuss his findings. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Jeffrey Dirk, as you heard in the introduction. I'm the managing partner with Vanessa and Associates, and we are the transportation consultants for the developer. And I think, Mr. Chairman, the introduction that you gave relative to peer review is very important, especially as it were technical aspects such as the traffic study, and I know you've a very well-qualified peer reviewer that will go through all of the analysis that we undertook as a part of this assessment. I would also mention that I did have the opportunity to assist the board in the peer review of that large 40B project that you had mentioned out on Route 6 as well, so familiar with how the process works. What I'd like to do tonight is just give you kind of a high-level overview of that very thick document that you had showed to the audience, and the reason for the overview, and I'll certainly answer any detailed questions you have, is because the important thing, obviously, other than explaining the project, is for the peer reviewer to take place. The peer reviewer is going to make sure that everything I present to you tonight, and in particular, data collection, analysis of impacts of the project, that that's all done in accordance with accepted practices. And those practices, and I'll actually go to the first slide, those practices are set by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. So, the Department of Transportation has standards that we need to follow whether we're doing a traffic study on a state highway or on a local roadway. Those standards set kind of the baseline level of the analysis, and that's the first thing that your peer review consultant is going to make sure of, is that everything that we've done is in accordance with those standards, and then they'll get into some more details as it relates to the impact of the project itself. What I also want to mention is, what is also very important is that we work with the town, that we don't undertake the analysis kind of in isolation. So, we're on a local roadway on Tucker Road, so we've coordinated with the town, with the planning department, to understand what is going on along that roadway itself in terms of development projects that have not yet been constructed, future plans that the town may have, either with respect to roadway improvements, but also just planned development in the area. So, we work very closely with the town, as well as the Department of Transportation, because one of the intersections we're going to look at is up at Route 6 as well, and that's obviously a state highway-related intersection. So, as I mentioned, the title of the study is a transportation assessment, so we're not just looking at motor vehicles, we're looking at pedestrians and bicycles as well, and how they interact with the roadway network. So, it's all modes of transportation, as well as public transit riders, which in this case, we don't have public transportation services, but we do look at opportunities as it relates to connectivity to the project site. So, by way of a very high-level overall finding with respect to the transportation assessment, as we looked at conditions in the future, with and without the project, what we identified just as an overall conclusion was the project itself did not result in a significant impact in terms of increases in motorist delay or vehicle queuing. Now, I do want to preface that, because there should not be any confusion that there's free-flowing traffic along these roadways, but what we're characterizing is what is the impact of the project at specific intersections before and after the project's traffic. So, if you are down going to the high school in the morning, we know that there's long delays making a left-hand turn to go to the high school, and that translates into vehicle queuing at the intersection. So, when we're talking about significance of impacts, it's how do we impact those conditions? So, if there's long queues, what we're saying is that the impact on that queue would be an increase of no more than six vehicles. But again, it doesn't mean that there's no vehicles there. If there's 15 vehicles in queue, we're saying that queue might go to, let's say, 18 or 20 vehicles. That's what we're saying in terms of looking at the impact of the project itself. So, as it relates to existing conditions, knowing what you experienced out there today, the backup of cars in front of you at any one location would not go up by more than six vehicles, and as you're waiting there, your wait time would not go up by any more than 35 seconds at a location. Where these impacts were identified was actually up at the Tucker Road intersection, just to the north of the project site, and that happened to be during the evening peak hour when people are trying to avoid Route 6, and they're using some of these local roadways to kind of avoid that traffic to get down into this area. Vehicles exiting the project site, so as you're looking at coming out of the country club driveway, as it exists today, there's relatively little delay. Once you get away from Route 6 and away from the two always-stop control intersections, in between there, the traffic doesn't experience significant delays. So, if you're coming out of the site, what we had said is the delays are somewhere around 30 seconds or less, so if you're coming out of the development itself, and that didn't translate into any residual queuing. That's important, because one of the paramount things that we look at is safety. As it relates to the access into the property, what we want to make sure of is, of course, emergency vehicles can get in and out of the property itself, that they don't swing over any center lines out on Tucker Road, that they can make the turning maneuvers into the site. So, as we're looking at how the driveway operates, what we want to make sure of is that if there's a backup of cars or a queue of cars in the driveway, a fire truck or an ambulance still needs to get in. So, we want to make sure that that still functions in a proper manner, and so we've determined that that can take place as it relates to the access. The last two items, by way of a summary, are the safety-related items. So, as we're conducting our assessment, what we also look at, not only motor vehicles, pedestrians, bicycles, but the safety of the roadways. So, as it relates to safety, what we look at is the motor vehicle crash history along the roadway and at each of the intersections. The Department of Transportation publishes the crash data for us, so that we're able to look at several years' worth of data historically as to how vehicles are interacting, acting at intersections, and then we look at a couple things as it relates to the safety. The first thing is we look at what's known as a motor vehicle crash rate. So, what the crash rate is, is it's an evaluation of the number of crashes that are happening at an intersection in relation to the volume of traffic going through the intersection. So, probably no surprise to anyone, when you have high volumes at an intersection, you generally expect that there'll be more crashes. Then, if you have a low-volume intersection, you don't expect there to be a significant number of crashes, because the interaction between vehicles, based on the number of vehicles, is low. So, that's the first thing we look at, is motor vehicle crash rates at each of the intersections. The Department of Transportation provides crash rate data, so you can look at in the town of Dartmouth, and in basically the southern region of the state. They publish information to say if you're at a signalized intersection or an unsignalized intersection, looking at all of the crashes that happened in the region of the state, what the crash rates are, and we compare the calculated crash rate to the state's average crash rates for this region. And as we look at the study area, what we found is that none of the intersections had a crash rate that was above the state average. They were all below the state average. Doesn't mean, again, that there's not crashes happening, but the number of crashes is not disproportionate to the volume of traffic going through the intersection. The other thing that the state provides is what's known as a high-crash-location database. So, anyone can go on to this database through Mass. DOT and look at where the state has qualified high-crash locations. That's a different thing than the state, the crash rate. What that actually looks at is the severity of crashes, not the crash rate, because you can have a large number of crashes happening, and they're all property damage. That would be a location that maybe it has a high-crash rate, but it's not on the state's high-crash list, because there isn't a number of personal injury crashes and things like that. So, what that does is it assigns point values to different types of crashes. So, a fender-bender type of crash might be worth one or two points. An injury-related crash could be like 10 points. Fatalities are 20 points or above. And so, what they look at is, they quantify the types of crashes, assign those numeric values, and then if it exceeds a certain value, they determine it to be a high-crash location. So, that's looking at severity versus number of crashes. In this area, there are no high-crash locations, meaning that, again, crashes are happening, but the severity is not at a level where it gets published on the state's high-crash location list. So, as it relates to safety, motor vehicle crash history, there are no high-crash locations in the study area that we evaluated as a part of the project. And then, lastly, in terms of that safety criteria, is looking at the access again. We need to make sure that it's safe to exit the property, so that's looking at sightlines. So, if you're coming out of the driveway, you're looking to the left or right, you need to be able to see a certain distance to make sure that it's safe to pull out, make a left or right-hand turn. Those safety parameters are based on the speed of traffic approaching the driveway. It's not the posted speed, it's the actual measured speed of traffic. So, we measure speeds, and I'll talk about that in a moment, over a multi-day period, and then what we look at is what's known as the 85th percentile speed. So, that's the speed, in this case, we measured the speed of about 12,000 vehicles over a two-day period. That's the speed at which 85% of those vehicles traveled at or below. In this case, it's the posted speed, I believe, is 35 miles an hour. The 85th percentile speed is closer to 40 where the driveway is. So, we're assessing sightlines based on 40 miles an hour, not 35. So, for 40 miles an hour, you need to be able to see a minimum distance of 305 feet. I'm sure you've been out to the site maybe many times, and the sightlines, based on the geometry of the roadway, relatively flat and level, they exceed 500 feet, so there's no sightline limitations. Those are the key, critical things as we're looking at safety. So, again, no high-crash locations, and the sightlines far exceed what's required for the safe operation of the intersection. So, now, I'm going to go into a little bit more depth of the study itself. So, this slide here just shows the context of the project. The project site is shown in yellow in the slide here. Route 6 is up here in the northern portion of the site. The high school is down in this location here. So, Tucker Mill Road or Tucker Road is generally right through the center of where the project site is located. So, this slide shows the study area that we evaluated for the project, and as you probably expect, it consists of the primary intersections through which project-related traffic will travel. So, it's the Route 6 intersection with Tucker Road, and then if we go southerly, it's the Allen Street intersection, the access into the property itself, and then the Russell Mills Road intersection. Those are the locations where, obviously, we have concentrated traffic, and we're going to show a slide in a moment that we've termed dispersal of traffic. So, traffic is concentrated, obviously, when it comes at the project driveway, and then some of it's going south, some of it's going north, as it travels north, which is where the majority of the trips are oriented. Some will turn onto Allen Street, the rest ends up up at Route 6. And really, as you get away from the site, the purpose of that is really the numbers get smaller and smaller. So, concentrated traffic at the driveway, lesser amounts where you get further away from the project site. One of the things your review consultant will be looking at is to make sure the study area is sufficient to report to you what the impacts of the project will be, so they'll be looking at that as well. There are parameters that we use to assess the study area. The basic parameter that the Department of Transportation sets is you need to look at any intersection where you will increase traffic by more than 100 vehicles during any one peak hour of the day. This study area includes all of those locations where we would either be at or below those thresholds. So, that's the starting point. It doesn't at all preclude for your consultant to ask that we quantify impacts beyond the study area, but this is the study area that meets those thresholds that we generally look at. Couple of other things to point out in this slide, because it has some colors on it that might be hard to see, but the orange lines are where there are sidewalks. So, again, as I had mentioned, it's a transportation assessment, so we want to understand where are their sidewalks, where are their bike lanes, where are their bus stops. So, the orange is where there are sidewalks, so you can see those are really up near the Route 6 intersection, and then as you get down closer to the high school is where we have our sidewalks. Crosswalks up at the signalized intersection with Route 6. I believe there might be some crosswalks down here at Russell's Mill Road, but it's really access into the high school. You do not see that there's no sidewalks in the vicinity where the project site is located. Bus service, there is not bus service along Tucker Road. Serta has bus service along Route 6, and I think that's the closest public transportation services to the project site. So, Mr. Chairman, as you're looking at the traffic study, it was published in August of 2025. We collected traffic data at each of these intersections in May, so I want to just make sure we didn't collect traffic counts during the summertime. We actually did them while schools were in public session in May, so it's reflective of probably the majority of the time what the traffic flows look like at this area. And I think importantly, because the high school influences the flow of traffic in this area, we had an extended count period to make sure we're quantifying the impacts. Typically, we would look at 7 to 9 in the morning and 4 to 6 at the evening, but because of the fact the high school is here, we did an extended count period of 2 to 6 in the evening, and that was able to capture the peak of the traffic in the evening in this area, to make sure that we included all of the traffic associated with the high school. So, as I mentioned, a couple things in terms of statistics that we measure in the vicinity where the site is. Volume of traffic, two-way along Tucker Road on a daily basis, and we also measure the speeds, as I mentioned. So, Tucker Road in the vicinity of the project site accommodates just over 6,000 vehicles per day. It's actually 6,135 is the number that we've measured. That's two-way traffic of our 24 hours. So, just if you remember that number, when we talk about the trip generation and we talk about what the daily increase in traffic is, that's going to be the number that gets added to the 6,135 vehicles. During each of the peak hours on the roadway, the morning peak hour is 7 to 8 in the morning. The road accommodates just under 700 vehicles, two-way traffic in the morning. At the evening, the peak hour is actually 2 to 3 in the evening, and that's because the high school highly influences the flow of traffic along that roadway. During the evening peak hour, the number is about 538 vehicles going by the project site. We talked about the travel speeds we measured, so the posted is 35. The measured speed of the 12,000 vehicles, the 85th percentile speed was just a little bit over that, somewhere between 36 to 37 miles an hour. So, again, that's why we assess our sightlines based on 40 miles an hour. So, that's the existing conditions context as it relates to what we measured in the area, all of the inventories that we had done of pedestrian and bicycle facilities. There are no bicycle facilities in the area, and the roads generally do not provide sufficient width for a shared-traveled way. A shared-traveled way would be at least a 14-foot-wide travel lane in each direction, so that if you're a motor vehicle, you don't have to cross the center line if there's a bicyclist. The roads generally aren't wide enough for a shared-traveled way accommodation. They're sufficient for two-way traffic, but not adding in the bicyclist to that roadway. So, this slide looks at the traffic characteristics of the project. So, the highlight of the column, as you had mentioned, it's 147 units. We've broken it out into two housing types. There's single-family homes, multifamily units, so those are attached units, townhouse-style type of development. They generate traffic differently. Single-family homes generate more traffic than multifamily, and so that's why we do this differently in terms of the trip generation. I think of importance is what I've shown here in the highlighted yellow column. So, this is the amount of traffic we expect the project's going to produce. The large number at the top, the 1,344, that's the two-way daily traffic volume that would get added to 6,135 vehicles on the roadway as it exists there today. Again, half is in, half is out. As we're looking at these numbers, because often what comes up as a question is, what about FedEx, UPS, and all those Amazon deliveries? Those are in these numbers. The way these numbers are developed is actual traffic counts done at, let's say, a single-family subdivision. So, if you went out and just counted all the vehicles over the entire day, they go in and out to a single-family subdivision, including Amazon, FedEx, UPS, all of those type of services, that's how these numbers are derived. So, it's in there, I guess, for lack of a better term, and so each of these numbers. The next two numbers are the peak hour numbers, so weekday morning peak hour. So, this is the amount of traffic that we, the project, is expected to produce during that 7 to 8 in the morning time period. So, traffic on Tucker Road's at its highest level, 7 to 8. During that time period, the project's expected to produce 96 vehicle trips. It's 23 entering, the majority 73 would be exiting. So, again, that's the 7 to 8 time period that we would add this traffic to. During the evening peak hour, so again, looking at this as 2 to 3 in the evening, that's the peak on the roadway, we would add 129 vehicle trips. It's 81 entering and 48 exiting. Most of that, again, would be entering in the evening time period. So, again, these are over a one-hour period. Very, again, kind of expecting a question on this, is how can you have 96 and 129 and get to, you know, 1,344? The reason for that is that these are the peaks. So, if I plotted a graph of this traffic, the total's going to come out to 1,344, but what you'd see is it would rise up gradually and peak at 96 in the morning. It would come down slightly, and then it would go back up to 129 in the evening, and then start to come back down. But over the course of the day, you'd end up at the 1,344. During each of those peaks that we're talking about, that's where you'd have 96 and 129. So, if I looked at it and said 7 to 8 in the morning were 96 vehicle trips, if I looked at 8 to 9, it could be 95, it's just not 96. So, it's not like it drops off a cliff. It gradually rises up, and then it gradually drops off, and as you look at it over the course of the day, the total would add up to 1,344. three hundred and forty-four. But the ninety-six and the one twenty-nine is that peak. If we plotted it, that's the peak of the curve you'd see in the morning, and then it would trough and then go back up and it would be one twenty-nine, and then it would drop back down during the rest of the day. So that's, that's why you see those numbers, ninety-six and one twenty-nine, and we still have a total of one thirty-four. It's because those are just the peaks. So as I had mentioned, dispersal. So as we looked at that trip generation that we had just shown on that slide there in the yellow column, what we also need to do is to add that traffic into the roadway network. And so what, that's what this slide shows here. This is the dispersal of trips. So as that concentrated traffic arrives or departs at the driveway, it then turns left or right and then ends up on one of the roadways in the vicinity, in our study area. So the way these percentages are developed, it's based on U.S. census data. So we're able to look at the census data for residents of the town, and you report you live in Dartmouth, but you also report where you work. And so we can take that information to say these will be residents of the town of Dartmouth. And if we know generally where people in the town work, we can then look at that and say, from this site, how do you get to those employment centers? So it's just as simple as going in and using Google Earth and just doing directions and saying, okay, from this point, how do I get to Boston, Fall River, New Bedford, wherever it happens to be? And it will show you those travel routes. And we can look at it during different time periods of the day to reflect congestion along Route six and what those travel patterns may be. So we start with that as a basis, and then we look at existing traffic volumes on the roadway, because that also gives us more of a finite analysis to say, how are people actually driving on these roadways? So putting that all together, we arrive at what you see on here, which is the trip dispersal pattern. So as you probably expect, we have sixty-five percent of the traffic is oriented to and from Route six, twenty-five percent on Allen Street, ten percent down near the, to the Russell Mills Road intersection. So you could look at that and say that is reflective of pickups and drop-offs and activity that would be associated with the high school in terms of assignment of traffic down in that direction. So we've estimated the traffic, as you saw on the previous slide, we've dispersed it onto the roadway network. And then, you know, as I talked about the significance of the impact of the project, the next thing we do is we look at, after we've added this traffic onto the roadway, what does it do for motors delays and vehicle queuing at each of these intersections during each of those time periods of the day? So as we've dispersed those trips, so ninety-six in the morning, one twenty-nine in the evening, and then we add it out, or disperse it onto the roadway, as you see here, we're then looking at impacts and quantifying them with respect to increases in delay and increases in vehicle queuing at each of these intersections. That translates into what's known as a level of service. So if you look at the traffic study, just to kind of summarize all of those operating conditions, they report operations just like a report card. So it's A through F, with A being the best operating conditions, F considered a movement or an intersection that's in failure. The state defines a D, D is your passing grade. So in general, we want to be a D or better for all movements or overall at an intersection. An E is considered a movement or an intersection that's at its design capacity. So if you see a level of service of E as you're looking at the chart, because the easiest thing is to look at the chart and see the A, B, C, D, E, see if there's any changes before or after the project's traffic. But what's important to us is delays and queuing at each of the locations, because that's really what most people experience, not whether it's an A, B, C, D, or E at the locations. So in looking at operations at the intersections, and I should also mention, we, we look at existing conditions, but when we're measuring the impact of the project, it's actually seven years in the future. That's the state requirement. So we have to look at conditions in the year 2032. So it's 2032 without the project, 2032 with the project, and the difference is the impact of the project at each of the intersections. So when working with the town, we did identify a development project, I believe, is up in this area closer to Route six, which was an office, some office space and a yoga studio, I think, that are being built. I think it was fourteen oh two Tucker Road, which I think is up near where Route six is. So we've included that project. That was the only project in this area with respect to development that's not yet built that would add traffic. There is a roadway improvement project at the Champion Terrace Route six intersection. It's the phase three of the Font's Corner Road improvements. So there's some additional signal work that's going to take place along Route six in coordination of the signals, because they are not working very well. Font's Corner heading into this direction, lots of queuing and backups. So the state's going to work on those signals, install new signal equipment, optimize the timing and coordination so the traffic flows a little better. But as it relates to this, this intersection, there is some signal timing changes that would take place. But what's important is this offset of Tucker Road and Champion Terrace, they're going to be extending a median that will restrict Champion Terrace to right in, right out. That will improve the operations of the Tucker Road approach, because now there can be more green time allocated to that rather than Champion Terrace. So the intersection, that intersection in particular, that's not where we show that we have any significant impacts of the project, because there's capacity created by the state improvement project. In fact, delays didn't go up by more than a little over two seconds, and the queues were not significant. It was probably on the order of two to four vehicles at that location. So again, that state project, which is scheduled actually for next year, will result in an improvement in that intersection as well as along the Route six corridor itself. Now, the Allen Street intersection, what we showed there was during the morning, there was very little impact as a result of the project. In the evening, this left turn movement to head southbound on Tucker Road, there's a large increase in traffic there during the evening. So that approach without the project is either at or a little over capacity in terms of that movement. So if it's at capacity, if you just add a few vehicles to it, it tips the scale in that case. So in this case, the increase from the project during that one peak hour tipped that scale. So what we look at is then what's the increase in queuing? And that's the location where we showed that the queue went up by about six vehicles to make that left-hand turn movement to come back toward the project site. So we did look at, you know, how this intersection operates with respect to, you know, potential improvements, but I think importantly, as it relates to safety, it's under always stop control. It's not a location that would be subject to installing a traffic signal. It's not appropriate for that location. The always stop control is actually a very appropriate measure. And the fact that we only experience this congestion during one time period of the day said to us, you know, it's not something that really requires improvements at that intersection. In fact, you know, putting in alternative traffic control measures may actually increase crashes. And so we want to kind of stay away from that, because it's not a safety issue. So we've identified that's the location where, as I said, the six vehicles, it's at that location. And during the evening peak hour only, not during the morning. So we talked about the driveway. The driveway in terms of those letter grades, it's a C, and the queue is less than one vehicle on average, because there was enough gaps in traffic for vehicles to be able to enter or exit. Down at the Russell Mills Road intersection, the evening peak period, it operates fine. All movements are D or better. It's the morning that this movement is actually at capacity. The project doesn't change that. And in fact, the impacts from the project, because we only have ten percent of the traffic heading in that direction, it's very minor. I don't even think there, if there was an increase in queue, it was about one vehicle as it relates to the project. So you have congestion. The congestion is during specific time periods, it's not all day. It happens to be associated with Russell's Mill, and probably no surprise, that's when the high school pickups and drop-offs in the morning. Allen Street in the evening, the left turn movement, and that probably does have to do with what's going on on Route six and cut-through traffic, that probably happens during that time period. Hopefully, with the improvements the state's going to do, we didn't make any adjustment in traffic volumes, but we know there will be capacity created here. So there is some opportunity to actually potentially get that traffic to stay on Route six and come down in that direction, which then would better allocate the volumes at that intersection. But again, we, we didn't take any credit for any redistribution of traffic that might happen. So after we've conducted all of this analysis, the last part of what we do is provide recommendations as it relates to the design of the project, but also some measures, in this case specifically, to look at how we might be able to offset the impacts of the development. So the first set of recommendations are our site access recommendations. As you get to the site plan discussion, these are all recommendations related to the site plan. And what I would say is these are things I think that you as a board would expect to see on a site plan. So there's nothing out of the ordinary here that's been recommended, specifying widths of driveways, traffic control within the project site, making sure that we've got proper sightlines. I would mention that a bus stop, because I know that's used, that's generally a discussion that comes up as well. We're expecting that, you know, subject to school department rules and regulations, that the bus may not come into the property. Generally, don't, they do not go into private property. So we would want to make sure that we've got an accommodation out on Tucker Road so that the children can walk from within the site, get out to Tucker Road where the bus would pick them up. So I think that's probably the important thing. The rest of this you'd expect as a part of any good site plan that's presented to you. Again, a little bit more recommendations as it deals with the site plan. These will, you'll all see as a part of the, the site plan when it's presented to you. Just making sure that drive aisles are with, are sufficient width as you get to where the clubhouse area so that vehicles can get into parking spaces. The same thing as it relates to driveways. This is something that's important. It's generally good practice in terms of length of driveways. We just want to make sure that everyone's always thinking about that. You don't want to have a condition where driveways are too short, so as the vehicle parks in the driveway, that the rear end sticks into the sidewalk, or it sticks out into the traveled way. So we just provide these as general parameters. So again, incorporated into the site plan, but also so that as you're looking at the site plan and your peer reviewer, I know will check this as well, just to make sure that these good design practices are, are included. Last set of recommendations that we have are what's known as transportation demand management measures. Because of this is a managed property, there's an opportunity to basically push information out to the residents of the project itself, which is different than if you just had a single-family subdivision where everyone owns their own lots here. Here, this is a managed property. So what this is all about is just informing the residents of what's available in terms of public transportation services, the ability to walk or bike. Now, I had mentioned there is no direct bus service to the project site. However, that does not mean that it's not a good idea to let people know where this, where's the commuter rail station? Where are these opportunities? So the bigger picture would be looking at how can we effectuate changes to regional flow of traffic in the area? So we don't have it today at the site, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't push this information out to the residents of the project. So that's really what this is about. These are measures that will be done as a part of the management of the property. That is my last slide. And again, we, we welcome the opportunity for peer review. As I said, I, I serve as a peer reviewer as well. A peer review results in better projects. And so what I really expect is your peer reviewer will ask some tough questions and will answer those tough questions, and to the extent that there's any revisions we need to do to this, we will certainly do that and report back to you. But we welcome the opportunity for constructive dialogue. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd be happy to answer questions that you have.
Thank you. But this time, I'm, the members of the board, if they have any questions of this particular gentleman.
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions at this time either.
I have a couple of questions. I recall, not that long ago, probably about three, four years ago. Thank you. About three or four years ago, there was a request for a development to be done. I think it was a Kentucky Fried Chicken at the corner of Tucker Road and Route six. And there were some significant concerns at that point in time about traffic. There were also representations that were made. I may be a little foggy as to the exact time, but I thought it was represented that in 2024, that there were going to be improvements that were undertaken by Mass DOT. And I know that I sit here today in 2025, and I just drive by that intersection just about every day, and I don't see any improvement. So the very improvements that you suggested that were going to be done in 2026 were represented to us that they were going to be done in 2024. That certainly had a lot of impact on me in making that decision for that particular request. So what type of improvement do you think that that's going to pose to the traffic impact? And I, and I think that, quite frankly, that the study, and maybe the science says that you need to limit it to the immediate intersections, but the bigger intersection that gets impacted from the intersection of Tucker Road and Route six is Font's Corner Road and Route six. That is an ongoing problem, and I think most of the people in this audience would agree. I myself just drove on the way here, and I got caught.
As did I.
Coming off of Font's Corner Road. And I was lucky that there wasn't a police officer there to pull me over, because I got caught, and I actually was, luckily, it did move soon enough before the other traffic needed to make its way through. So what is your position or your understanding about the impact, not only on the Tucker Road, but the further impact that it causes on Font's Corner Road?
So Mr. Chairman, and I, I appreciate the, the comment or question as it relates to the improvements at, at this intersection. So what I can say is that it is programmed, it's funded, and the funding is, is on, it's on the State Transportation Improvement Program listing with funding in the year 2026. So the state has allocated money on the tip list for 2026. So it's physically programmed, the money's been set aside for the work to get done. I can confirm that with DOT, that that, that they're still moving forward. Our understanding, based on the funding and where the design is, is that that's going to move forward next year, but I'll, I'll verify that. The Font's Corner Road intersection, the issue there is the coordination, the lack of coordination of the traffic signals, because I, I went through that intersection today, and I actually, I, I went out and around and came out at the other side on Route six because I could not get into the traffic on, on Font's Corner. So I actually went through them all and came out at the other end and then got into the back of the queue that was there, because I couldn't get through it. And when I looked at it, I mean, you, if you stand there and look at it, you can see it's because that light, the light, the traffic signal, I shouldn't call it light, the Font's Corner traffic signal and the next traffic signal to the east are not coordinated. So when you sit there, what was really frustrating, especially as a traffic engineer, is I look and I say, I've got a green light, and that's a red light down the road there, and it's completely full of cars. And then the Font's Corner Road signal comes on for the left turn, and they come, and then they stick in the intersection there. So the lack of coordination between those intersections, plus the demand, is what's causing the problem. It just jams up completely. And it, it happens, and then it, you know, it dissipates, but it's very concentrated during that time period. And really, what would needs to happen is this phase three project, which includes the work at the intersection we're talking about, which is upgrading the signal equipment, and then most importantly, is coordinating those two traffic signals, so that you're not dumping traffic into the back of a queue, because that just creates gridlock, and that's what's happening there today. So I will confirm that that is still programmed for the, for next year, which is the 2026 fiscal year, and, and report back to you. To the extent that the question is really, what if that doesn't happen? What would you need to do to address the impacts of that project? That, that's something that we can look at so that, you know, oftentimes, you know, there's a, if you're looking at conditions at the appropriate time, would be to say, if this, if this happens, then you don't have to do anything. If that doesn't happen and you want an occupancy certificate, you've identified, quantified, and the peer reviewer has said, this is what needs to happen. So that way, you, you've got it both ways. And I think from your standpoint in protecting the town's interests, you just make sure the mitigation takes place. And if the state does it, that's fine. We may identify that we just need to re-time the traffic signal or something, because the other, I think, key part of it is it's a state highway intersection. So we can collectively agree as to what we want to do, and Mass DOT has the ultimate say. Because they have a project there, it's very unlikely that they're going to let any physical work take place, other than signal re-timing, maybe some safety-related things if that's needed. But because they have a road project, they will say, you don't touch anything up there, because we've got a road project going on. And so, you know, it's already out the bid, we've already awarded the bid, so you can't touch it. But we can certainly identify in, you know, what-if scenario to, to, you don't provide that option.
All right. Thank you. So at this time, I'm going to open this up so that people, and I'm going to ask people to raise their hand. I think there's a microphone, someone's going to come around with a microphone, with a microphone that you can go to. There are microphones in the aisle. So if you just raise your hand, make your way to a microphone, I'll give you an opportunity to speak. I will also say this, we have a traffic consultant that we've engaged. However, out of fairness to him, that was only formally done, I think, two days ago, or maybe today's work, Thursday, was it yesterday? When did they pay? Yeah, he's here. Yeah, but when did they pay? All right, were you able to do extensive analysis, very high level? Okay, great, okay. So I guess we do have our traffic consultant here, and we will, obviously, if there's any questions that we may have, he will defer to us. He's here to represent us, and us in general, so that he can provide from his perspective whether or not what that gentleman has said is accurate or whether or not there are certain other variables that would need to be taken into consideration. So all I ask is whoever comes to the microphone that you state your name and your address and be clear and concise about your delivery.
Thank you. Diane Keltica, 39, Bayberry Lane, Dartmouth, Massachusetts. I have a question to this gentleman. I'm sorry, sir, I forgot your name.
So one other thing, actually, the questions have to be directed to.
Okay, the question is.
They're directed to us.
Why was Friends Academy?
Just for everyone. Just one sec. Everyone that comes before, direct the questions to the board and then we will ask the individuals who are the appropriate individuals to answer the questions so that we all will be able to have the full understanding and a full and complete response to whatever that question may be. Okay? Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you. The question I have, in this diagram that we were shown, Friends Academy was never included. Friends Academy is a private school. Many of those students are picked up every day by a parent, nanny, or whoever. That brings a lot of traffic into the area late afternoon on dismissal. My question to the board and to this consulting firm is why was Friends Academy not factored into those figures?
I'll let the gentleman speak.
So we, when we conducted our traffic counts, I'm assuming, and I I'm sorry because I is Friends Academy along Tucker Road? Okay. So so.
Okay. All right. Hold on, hold on, folks. All right. Hold on, hold on, folks, this is not going to work like this, right? We can't have this happen, right? So let me just, let me just explain one thing. He did state earlier that they actually conducted the traffic study in May, taking into account the schools and all the roadways and all the traffic along the roadway. So I I don't understand specifically, but obviously I want to give him an opportunity. Let's let him speak. Obviously, the cheering and the rant, we don't need it, right? So we're a great town, we have a great caliber of people here, this should be no different. So I would just ask that, and I understand the emotion, all right? I'm I'm as emotional about this as you folks. I may not be showing it, but I am. And everyone's going to have an opportunity to ask that question and have an answer. Okay? So I'm going to give the gentleman an opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, and a very good question. When we conduct, when we conduct our traffic counts, it it's everything that's operating on these roadways. So we don't study like, we don't study your personal driveway, we don't study the personal driveways of of any of the, you know, businesses or homes along the roadway. But what we do is if you if that traffic has to go through one of these intersections, it's in there, it's been counted. So the vans, the time periods that those arrive and depart, the concentrated traffic you mentioned, it's all captured in our traffic analysis. So each of those, because I'm assuming, based on what you told me as to the location, that I will not forget since the reaction that we have here, it's in there. It's in every traffic count that was done at the intersection. We did daily traffic counts over a two-day period on the roadway. It's in there. We did peak hour traffic counts at each of the intersections, 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning, 2:00 to 6:00 in the evening. Any traffic that's associated with that site is included in our traffic counts, it's in our analysis. So it it's all baked into the numbers that we have here. It was not excluded. We don't study their driveways, but we study the impact of the traffic from that project at each of the intersections. So it's in our analysis.
I'm not sure if that's the answer that we want to hear. I would say that if you want all this analysis, Friends Academy should have been put on that that page with the entrance and exit of Friends Academy on there. So my feeling is, I'm not qualified, I'm not a mathematician, whatever, I don't have your degrees. I really feel that your figures are not accurate, you're telling, you're, he's telling us that they are. I question that.
All right.
I want to see Friends Academy and those figures, not just Dartmouth High School, et cetera.
I understand. We we do have our peer review consultant. We're not going to ask him to come up right at this moment, but I'm going to ask him at some point to address that issue as well. Okay? What's your name again, ma'am?
Diane Keltica, Bayberry Lane, North Dartmouth.
All right, thank you. We'll follow up on that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
May I?
Sure.
I think we should take the questions and rather than answer every question, because some of the questions might be redundant, so we're not wasting time, so.
Well, if they're redundant, we're not going to ask them, we're not going to ask them to answer the question yet.
No, I mean, if he if he responds to those, the two, three, four, if they're the same questions, we don't have to go back and forth discussions with every individual. I think we're on the light, I don't think we have.
Well, we only, well, I was planning on staying, maintaining this at least till 7:30.
7:30, we have half an hour.
So we can move on out of fairness. We have, we still have another half an hour. And then if it has to go on to the next hearing date, it'll go on to the next hearing date. Sir.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Mike Rabello, 14 Northfield Lane, Dartmouth, Mass. My question is simply this, the diagram that you showed of Fons Corner Road, I mean, of Tucker Road, as you come down Allen Street and if you took a left and headed south on Tucker Road, there is a considerable curve there that you did not elaborate on. And so I cannot understand some of the numbers that you came across as far as safety and that also is a flood area. So I want you, just, Mr. Chairman, like to know what would be done about that.
All right, thank you. So obviously, you heard that?
I did, yes.
Okay.
We will look at the the curve to see if there's any crashes that are related to the curve of the roadway.
Yeah, I believe he's getting at the line of sight there.
Correct.
So there's Country Club Boulevard before you on the right, on the right-hand side. And I guess there's, actually, there was a fatality there about five or six, maybe a little long, more than that, involving a motorcyclist, probably closer to 10 years ago. But obviously, that was an isolated incident. But nonetheless, that's obviously the concern, something to look into?
Absolutely.
All right. So let me just mark that down before we move on to the next one. Can you identify yourself?
Hi, my name is Stephanie Ronzker. I own Eight Country Club Boulevard, so right there. I have a couple of questions. First, you said about the 500 feet that you could see from the Tucker Road coming out of Hawthorne, which is extremely hard to believe because if you're looking at that corner right now, I don't understand how that would be 500 feet at all. I come out of there every day and I know that you come around that corner and it's an extremely hard corner to get out of. So 500 feet is not anywhere near what you can actually come across that. My second question is, what were the dates that you actually did this in May? Because were the seniors out at that point? Because seniors get out at the end of May. And was that in those numbers also?
Through the chair.
Yes.
The other question is like, a lot of those seniors are on internships.
All right. You have to direct the questions to us.
A lot of the seniors are on internships and they leave at that time, too. So we accounting for all these things and those seniors driving.
Okay.
So through the chairman, the traffic counts were done on May 14th?
So that was May 14th?
May 14th.
And was that two days during the week?
Yes.
So do we know anything about weekends and what that traffic's going to look like?
So the high school's closed. So we have a, we have a drop in traffic volumes. And what I would say is what you will find is that the peak traffic flow is actually during the evening. That's the highest time period of traffic flow. There's a peak on a Saturday, but the traffic from the project is actually lower during that time period because it's more dispersed during the during the weekdays, whether during the weekend rather than on a weekday. A weekday, it's more pronounced because people going to work as well as dropping children off at school, which doesn't happen on a Saturday or doesn't happen in terms of sporting events and things like that. It's it's a different time periods, so that's why it's not typically analyzed.
I understand that, but if you know anywhere about Dartmouth, you know that all the soccer fields, basketball fields, baseball fields, everything is in this town of this section of Dartmouth. And especially weekends, everything gets played over here. So what is the traffic going to look like all day on a Saturday and Sunday? So even the stadiums, everything, it's all over here. Everybody uses Tucker Road all day long on weekends. That's my question.
Thank you. I was just informed that there is another mic. I'm sorry I didn't see you earlier, sir. I don't know how long you've been there.
Pick me, pick me. Full disclosure, my name is Roy Bertolato. I live at One Country Club Boulevard, which is right on the corner of Tucker Road and Country Club Boulevard. I actually own all, most of the frontage that Hawthorne Country Club has on Tucker Road. The only thing they own is the driveway. I own all the rest of that property. Let's add some reality to this whole conversation because this is turning into a kabuki dance. The traffic on Tucker Road is a disaster. I have lent assistance with bloody towels to more accident victims than you could possibly imagine. I've had a pickup truck upside down in my backyard. And if you could put up on that, you know, a meets and bounds up on the projector, you could see how far that pickup truck went and flipped over upside down into the stream in my backyard. Blood. I had a gal, young woman, coming north on Tucker Road, launch her vehicle over 16 feet into the air, moved a boulder that we had to get an excavator in to put it back into place, and she landed in my backyard. It's unbelievable to see what, where she went. We've had accident after accident on the corner. If you go into that little piece of woods on the corner that I owned on Tucker Road and Country Club Boulevard, you could build a car. There are license plates, headlights, taillights, you can't believe what's there. Until they put the stop sign at the top of Allen Street, and we petitioned for that stop sign for years. By the way, I've been living here since 1998. And in full disclosure, I have nothing against affordable housing. I live in Dartmouth because of affordable housing. In the early 1970s, I bought a house in a project called Meadow Woods, which was funded by the Farmers Home Administration. Young family, one child, it allowed me to move into this unbelievably fabulous community, raise four children, put them through this school. So I have nothing against affordable housing. In fact, I like it. I think it adds diversity to the community. Tucker Road is not the place for 157 houses. We already have 157 houses built on or abutting Tucker Road in the last 10 years anyways, and more are going to get built. It's still farm country down here. This is, this is the craziest thing I've ever heard. When I heard that it was going to be a 55 and over community, I said, gee, that's a great idea for this property. And plus, it was only about 50 houses. First of all, they're not all going to work at the same time. They're not all going to pick up their children at the same time. They're not all coming home at the same time. It was a wonderful idea. I was all for it. I wanted to invest in it. This idea is crazy. It just doesn't make any sense. People are going to get killed. When they built the high school down there, that started an influx of brand-new drivers every morning, driving down Tucker Road. I don't know about you people, I will not drive down Tucker Road at 8:00 in the morning. I mean, they're looking at their cell phones, they're in my lane. I can't believe there hasn't been even more accidents than what we've had in that area.
All right. So is there a question that you want to direct for the board, sir?
I'm sorry?
No, not to be facetious, but is there a direct question that you have for the board so I can take it to the gentleman?
The only question that I have is you said that you're going to have a 24-foot entrance going into this development. Is that driveway that exists there right now 24 feet? I'd have to look at the site plan and get back to you as to what it is. I'm just telling you what it needs to be. Because my property goes right to the driveway. So, you know, that's something to consider. Yep. Anyways, that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
This is, this is.
Can identify yourself, ma'am?
Tammy Greenspan, Fairway Drive, Dartmouth, Mass. So my kids actually went to Friends Academy, so I'm very familiar with the traffic pattern. And our drop-off time was different, but it does kind of go through there. But it can back things up, probably a minimum of 10 to 12 minutes in the morning heading out toward Route 6. So not necessarily where the entrance of Country Club Boulevard would be, but down the way, people do get stuck there and it's incredibly difficult to get to work in the morning. Some pull U-turns right in the middle of Tucker Road and come back and try to go around. And also, they get out at 3:00 in the afternoon, not 2:00 like the high school. On Wednesdays, they get out a little bit earlier. So you're talking 200 to 300 on cars in the morning going in and out. So if you're saying, I just want to make sure this is correct, I have a couple of questions. One was, you're saying about 35 seconds per six cars, that's what it would hold us up. So if there's 1,300 cars or 200 cars or whatever it is, is that the correct figure that I heard earlier when I walked in? I just want to be clear on that.
That's a two-way 24-hour number, so you divided it in half, half in, half out, over 24 hours.
Okay. And then other questions I had were kind of what Stephanie had said earlier about what days you did the the actual study on and were the seniors really in the school? I don't, I don't know that on May 15th, but could we check in to see if they really were there?
May 14th, just.
Oh, okay, May 14th. My third question regarding the street would be, what is the actual influx? You didn't do it in August, but we do have a huge, significant influx of people that come here in the summer. So it doesn't really go backwards. Maybe the students in the morning at 7:00 go backwards, but a lot more people do come to Dartmouth. So I'm just curious about that for future answer. I wasn't here for the last meeting, so I do have actually a couple of questions about the proposed development itself, besides how many units it is. 40B in the town of Dartmouth, what is the actual cost, like income guideline for that? I'm curious what the houses will be sold at. What is the percentage of those houses that will be sold at the low income? And what is the rest of the housing going to be sold at?
That's not a question that we could really direct to him. That's not.
No, I'm not even directing it to him. I'm just.
But that's, you can direct that to us.
Yeah, totally. Sorry for looking in that direction.
And we will try to see if we can get some of that answered. If you could just speak up a little louder.
Oh, sorry.
About specifically, what, what is the actual cost that it will translate to?
So, you know, are the houses going to be sold at $275,000? Are they going to be sold at 400? What's affordable housing mean in Dartmouth on the guidelines? 450? I'm just not sure what that is.
Okay.
And then are all the houses sold at that number or is it just 10% have to be at that number? And or 20 and the other 80% can be sold at market rate?
We'll have the petitioner come up and provide some explanation to that.
Okay. I just want to make sure I have everything here. And then if it does go to low income versus over 55, which I would hope it goes toward over 55, would they be doing anything else in there? Like, will it be kind of like a planned unit development? Are they going to have a store or a cafe or a restaurant? I mean, I'm not really worried about the emergency vehicles entering or exiting. It was a wedding venue, so we know it can handle large amounts of groups coming in and out of the space itself. But I'm curious what else would be on, you know, I guess, the block for anybody to put up there in the future. That's it.
All right. One thing I can answer for you is May 14th was a Wednesday of this year. It was a Wednesday, so I guess they picked right slab dab in the middle of the week. Ma'am, if you can identify yourself, please.
Certainly. Kathy Del Sordo at 12 Beverly Street in Idlewood. I have a couple of questions. First of all, I think with the peak hours, I heard a contradiction of your speaking here. At first, you said the peak hours were from 2:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon and then you just said 2:00 to 6:00. What are the peak hours, please, just for clarification?
So through the chair, the the peak hour in the morning is 7:00 to 8:00 in the morning? And then the peak in the evening is actually, it occurs in the afternoon, is 2:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon?
So 2:00 to 3:00. I live in Idlewood and at 3:00 and 4:00 and to 4:30, I cannot get on Tucker Road. I can't, we have an approximate 40 housing, individual housing units in Idlewood. When we moved there, that was about 40 years ago as well, it was easy access. The last storm with a tree down on Tucker Road, it took three days for an ambulance to take one of our residents who has daily trips for dialysis to get out of there. It took three days. They had to carry this individual out on a stretcher. It's deplorable what's happened on Tucker Road. It's deplorable, what's happened on Tucker Road. To have 147 units come to one entrance on one road is totally absurd. I've done planning, I was on the planning board for four terms, many in the 80s. I understand zoning and planning. There's no way that that is a feasible, livable entrance, because it's not livable right now on Tucker Road from Idlewood. We need to see some planning for Tucker Road. This Route 6 entrance is absurd, it's been going on and on and on and on. And, you know, you can give us information, and as said before, I think we heard about it even many years before, through the SERPA group, go back to SERPA notes board and tell me how long ago that really started with the Route 6 intersection and Tucker Road. And until that is done and Tucker Road is developed completely for safety, this is a project that has to stop.
Thank you. Sir, if you could identify yourself, please?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Robert Almy. I live on 307 Smithneck Road in South Dartmouth. I'm here as a private individual. My experience includes seven years as a deputy director of the Santa Barbara County Planning Department, and taught environmental studies in, at the University of California, Santa Barbara, for 18 years. The classes, class was about prospective evaluation of impacts from proposed projects. I have two observations, and I will frame them as a question. First, I note that we have a junior high school and an elementary school up Slocum Road from the Allen Road intersection. I also am aware that a lot of people work in New Bedford and in Points East. Were I to live in this part of Tucker Road, I would not go up to Route 6, I would simply go up Allen Street. So my question is, why wasn't the Allen Street-Slocum Street intersection evaluated? And secondly, I suggest strongly that the numbers for traffic on Allen Street be reevaluated, evaluated. There's no reason for traffic to be reduced as vehicles travel Allen Street, because there's, there are no businesses up there. Thank you for your time. I deeply appreciate your board making this time available for public input. Thank you.
Thank you. So following up on the gentleman's question, Allen Street and Slocum Road, legitimate concern? Is there any reason why that was not part of the analysis?
The, as I mentioned, the study area, as we look at where the project will produce enough traffic to show an impact, that intersection was not added, because it's not that we're not adding traffic, I think we said we have 25% of the trips going there, but as you remember, looking at the dispersal diagram, we don't, the amount of traffic going through that intersection didn't rise to the level where, at least from looking at standard practice and establishing study area, it wouldn't be added to the study area, not because there's no issues there, but because what we'd be reporting to you is what the issues are today, but how the project impacts those issues wouldn't show up on anything. It might be a few seconds of delay or queuing, but that's why we don't look at it, just because the intersections we looked at are, if there is a pronounced impact of the project, to the extent that there might be the need for improvements to address, and it has to be clear, to address the impact of the project, that's where it's going to show up. As we get further away from the site, it's not, the traffic's going to go through the other intersections, obviously, but the amount of traffic doesn't get to a level where we produce an impact that would necessitate improvements to accommodate the project's traffic. These other locations are different, that's why we looked at them, because it's concentrated at those locations.
All right, thank you. All right, so we got three more, I'll get through those three, but I want to give our consultant a moment, so that he can come forth and explain a little bit about what he's done, and we might even ask him a couple of questions that we have that have already been posed, and maybe he can give us some brief overview. So I'm going to limit the rest of the public speaking portion of tonight's meeting to the three of you. You can go next.
Nathan Bean, Nathan Bean, 14 Hilltop Road. It's right off of Allen Street, and anybody that lives over there knows that it is a major corridor for ambulances, fire trucks, EMS, et cetera. I want to know what jurisdiction this, this is to you, Mr. Chairman, please, what jurisdiction fire company is this going to be allocated under?
Excuse me? Did you say that? I couldn't hear you.
What is the jurisdiction fire company that is, that this development is going to be located with? Is it going to be Fire Number Two, or Fire Number One, or?
District. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what district. I don't think, I don't believe that that's part of his purview.
Okay, well, but it's a major cor...
But I will, I will take it down as a question.
Allen Street is a major corridor for ambulances. If you live anywhere along there, they're in and out all day, every day, and so if we have 147 more units, everybody gets sick after a while, and, you know, was that considered?
I don't know the answer to the question, but we're going to get you the answer to that question.
Okay.
And obviously, you know, whatever additional burden or additional responses that they will have to attend to, don't know what their capacity is, but...
And if we're looking at bottlenecks and corridors, et cetera?
We did have a comment, let me see, I think I've got a comment here that I probably can read into the record. This came from the fire department. I might have, I believe I read this the last time, or was this another? No, so this was a supplement. The fire department said, "I had a meeting with the engineers, and we discussed the cul-de-sac size and agreed with being okay as long as the longest fire truck in town can make it around. Also discussed the emergency access road that the property needs to be crushed gravel and have a breakaway gate." So at this point, I think his, his analysis was focused just strictly on the development itself, not necessarily the additional burden that it would have.
So then, my follow-up question is to the gentleman at the podium of Allen Street to Slocum, building off of the last question. Did you guys analyze any of the safety response times in the corridor toward the local hospital?
So we don't, we don't measure safety response times between the hospital and where this is, or wherever they happen to be going. We do look at delays, so to the extent that there's increased, if there's increased delay to some ex, obviously, to some extent, it delays the emergency vehicles, but per state law, you've got to pull to the side and let them get through. So it, I would not say that there's not, if there's increased delay at the Allen Street intersection Tucker Road, yeah, there's going to be more vehicles there, they're going to need to get out of the way of that emergency vehicle, so, you know, I, I wouldn't say that there won't be any increase in, in delay.
Okay. My last question, which nobody can answer, is, looking down at the Pascomancet River, all of that asphalt and building material, 147 units going down into the major waterway in our town is significant. So that's not a question, but it's just a statement.
And we, and we will address those concerns with other consultants that we'll have, but thank you. All right.
Chuck Residick, 48th Green Drive. Quick question regarding, you had a slide up, and it was just mentioned about an emergency entrance or exit out of, out of the project. Where would that go and how would that be constructed?
I did raise that just now, as a result of reading what the fire department had put as a comment. It's really not within his purview. We'll address that probably at a later date, but certainly a concern. I've got a big asterisk next to that, sir. It's actually probably number one, emergency exit, with a big asterisk on it. So hopefully, and if I do forget, I'm sure you'll remind me at another hearing. Yes, thank you. And I believe, I thought it was only three.
I'm here too.
All right, Erin.
Hello, my name's Liz Richter, homeowner, 960 Tucker Road, two houses, two driveways south of the entrance to Hawthorne. I was kind of confused about the numbers. If there's 147 units, how are there only going to be an addition of 73 cars leaving the development in the morning? 147 units, I did hear the gentleman state that in single-family homes, there's more traffic, more, causes more cars coming in and out of whatever their own personal driveways. How would that only result in 73 cars leaving the development in the morning? I don't understand the math, I mean, I'm no mathematician either, but I don't understand how that could add up, it doesn't really calculate at all.
And that's a good question. It crossed my mind as well, but I'm sure he got, he has the ability to answer that question.
And that's a very common question, I appreciate you asking it. I did describe kind of those curves as it relates to traffic and how it peaks in the day. What I would say is, it's, you know, as an example, I, I'm early into the office, so if you stood at the end of my subdivision, or where I live on the street, I'd be, if, if the peak was 7:00 to 8:00, you wouldn't count me, because I've already left, I'm going to the office. And, and that's why. It's really about 7:00 to 8:00 in the morning, there might be 73 vehicles leaving, but if I looked at 8:00 to 9:00, there could be 72, there could be 70, it's just not 73. And it really has to do with, when do you need to be to work? When do you need to drop my children, the child off at school? So the way that we, you know, kind of run our lives determines how that traffic flows. So it's just during that one peak hour, it's 73, and then, you know, 7, 8:00 to 9:00, like I said, it could be 70, but not everyone's leaving at the same time. There's, that, that 73 is the highest amount, but some people leave before, some people leave after, so, so that's why.
73 people that currently do not live there?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all, that's, that's all new, net new, just related to our development.
And that's only accounting for one car per household?
No, it's, it's actually, so for single-family homes, single-family homes generally, generally generate somewhere between, somewhere around 10 trips per home over the course of the day. During the peak hours, it's generally about at least one trip per home, is the way it works. It doesn't have anything to do with the number of automobiles owned. It has to do with the type of use that's there. That type of use produces traffic, because we could say, if we limited everyone to one car, then I could come back and say to you, we don't really generate any traffic, because everyone only has one car, or we're not providing parking, and that's usually the scenario of, we're providing a parking ratio that's really, really low, and so we're not going to generate much traffic, because we don't have parking. That's not the way it works. It's based on the land use that's there, and that land use generates traffic, and then you need to accommodate the traffic, and you need to park that traffic. So generally, single-family homes, you probably have, you've got more than two vehicles generally per home.
Okay.
Thank you.
I also just want to point out, just living two houses south of the entrance, it is nearly impossible for me to get to work on time any day of the week. It's nearly impossible to make that left-hand turn. I've, I can also account for, just in the time that I'm home, out of work, between, you know, 4:00 and, you know, whatever, 8:00 AM, I have noticed, I've witnessed, actually, three car accidents in the past month. Just wanted to point that out for you. I'm also very curious about how the traffic coming in and out of the development will be regulated. So I've noticed, you said something about a stop sign.
Correct.
But there's a stop sign at Allen Road that often backs up beyond my driveway. How would those people leave and make a left onto Allen Road with that backed up, with those 73 cars, or however many you'd like to say?
Right. So, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Through the chair, it's, so the 73 cars, again, just, they are dispersed, so they don't, it's not 73 car, everyone just doesn't jump in their car and all of a sudden rush out like it's the end of a Patriots game or something, it's, it doesn't work like that, it's spread out. So it's 73 cars over the course of the hour. There will be times when, yeah, there's maybe 10 cars, or whatever happens to go out there at the same time. They'll come to the stop sign, wait for a gap in traffic, and then turn onto Tucker Road. I think the important thing, as you look at it, and I think what everyone has said about their own experiences, if you are, if you have no interest in this project at all, it's not going to affect you. They're going to be stuck in the site trying to go out as you, as you drive by, so it's similar to what you experienced. So from the standpoint of looking at it, there will be delays and queuing in our site, not out on Tucker Road. So the people that live there are going to have the same experiences that you all have on the roadway, where they're going to need to wait for a gap in traffic. What the analysis says is that 73 vehicles over the course of the hour trying to get out of the site, they're able to get out of there, but they do have delays. As I said, on average, during the peak hour, those delays are, you know, 30 seconds, let's say, trying to get out of there. Every single vehicle is trying to get out of there. So that, you know, will translate into queuing at times on the driveway, but it doesn't affect Tucker Road, you're just going to drive by, those people are going to wait to get out. Doesn't, wouldn't affect you if you have no interest in going into the development.
Okay, that does lead me just to my last point.
Ma'am, I already, I already had your three questions.
Can I say this one, last one, please?
All right.
I did look through their list of proposed appeals, and they seem to, vast majority of them are surrounding traffic within the development. And what the gentleman just stated also kind of reflects a lack of care about the people that will, would potentially be in this development, and their safety, and, you know, their well-being as well, just them getting to work on time. I mean, the list of appeals that they'd like to make impact the traffic within their community, if there's no care for the traffic within their community, it's a red flag to me. I don't know about how much they're going to care about the traffic in our community outside of it.
Point taken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bob Saltzman, 966 Tucker Road. We're the immediate neighbors to the south. You heard from the immediate neighbor to the north, we're the next-door neighbor on the south side. That entryway is not even close to 24 feet wide now. As Liz mentioned, there have been several accidents. If this is not a safe entryway, we have lost several mailboxes because of people taking that turn.
Thank you. All right, so now, I don't know if you're able to provide any type of insight with regard to the emergency access that was, you did reference it at some point as part of your analysis. Is there anything you can give us from your perspective that would further elaborate, that might address some of the concerns?
What's going on?
Well, I'd rather just deal with you at this point. Do you, is there something you could provide?
In terms of, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, anything specific in terms of the question on it?
Well, I guess it'd be more appropriate, it might be more appropriate to ask someone else the question, but I'm just wondering if you have some insight as to what you feel would be appropriate for access, for emergency access for that particular site?
So general, so the general rule of thumb is that if you have more than 30 dwelling units, that you want a secondary means of access for emergency vehicles, but that's, you know, not hard and fast, you also need to look, how deep is the site? How many units? How deep is the site? You know, what is the, you know, I think someone mentioned emergency vehicle delays, what's the path, what's the travel time path from when they turn from the public way to get to the farthest unit? And you want to make sure that that's an acceptable distance. In looking at the property, we, we have a recommendation as to secondary access for emergency vehicles and the standards that that should be designed to as a recommendation. At the end of the day, it's the fire department, because we make a recommendation based on those standards, but the standards, even as it relates to the fire code, it always says it's the authority having jurisdiction, which is the fire chief. I have worked on projects where we've had 200 or 300 units, and the fire chief has made a determination that if the units are constructed in such a way, in particular having sprinkler systems, cisterns, other things within the development, that they are comfortable fighting a fire with one means of access for that reason. There's also things that can be done related to the design of the roadway, where you can have a median with cuts in it, so the fire truck can get from one side to the other. So there's a lot of options. Our recommendation, based on the number of units and the depth of the site, is that consideration for secondary access should be made as a part of the project, and I think the fire department has made the same comment as it relates to it. We provided recommendations as to the design and the width, so 20 feet is minimum for the, for a fire road, unless the fire chief says they're good with something less than that. Sometimes the fire chief says, "I don't want as wide of a road." It has to be constructed of a material that can support travel by the largest responding emergency vehicle under all weather conditions, and it has to be maintained. So you've got to be able to plow it, and when it rains, and it snows, you can't have ruts or puddles or things like that, so that the truck will get stuck. So those are standards, they're in the fire code, a building permit won't be issued if we don't meet those according to what the fire chief dictates. But there's a lot of ways to achieve the emergency access. At the end of the day, it's up to the fire chief, because they're, they're the ones who have to direct their firefighters into the development, and they won't do it if they're not comfortable with it.
All right, thank you. I know that doesn't directly answer your question, but we'll follow up on that another time. I want to give an opportunity to our consultant to come forward and provide a little oversight as to what his analysis has been, and maybe even address some of the concerns that the member, that the people of the community have raised. So if you could just go up to the podium?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the members of the board, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the project team, and Mr. Dirk from BAI, in providing that helpful insight into the traffic impact, excuse me, transportation impact assessment. For the record, my name is Jeff Bandini, I'm a senior project manager with NICH Engineering. We are the town's peer review consultant. And as mentioned briefly earlier, we were given notice to proceed on this assignment last week, so we have not had an opportunity to fully review the transportation impact assessment, and therefore have not provided written commentary on the methodology in the report as it pertains to the information that Jeff portrayed this evening, or the information relative to the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Engineering Guidelines. And so, listening to the presentation and providing a high-level overview of some of the information in the study, I did come up with some high-level observations that we will be memorializing in our peer review letter that I wanted to discuss with you this evening, in case that's earned any additional commentary from the board, or would, was, would show up in, in future correspondence and future hearings pertaining to this project. One thing I did want to mention, and I'm surprised it took an hour and 20 minutes for this to come up, but the issue of the parking on the site, the application, excuse me, the transportation impact assessment indicated that... the transportation impact assessment indicated that the project will not be seeking a waiver because it is adhering to the town zoning requirements. But I wanted to illustrate that as part of the review process, we typically look at what the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is the same institute that oversees the trip generation that Mr. Dirk discussed, puts together a comprehensive list of parking generation, similar to what they do for trip generation. And so looking at the number of parking stalls at a development such as this would generate. And so as part of the peer review, we would request that that information be provided so that we can compare that to the town bylaws to see if there's any discrepancy between the parking that is provided on the site and the parking metrics that ITE suggests be provided for a development of this type and this size. Also, in so going, after all that presentation, we did have a couple of notes that were a little bit redundant, but I did, I did want to highlight the issue of Slocum, the Slocum Road at Allen not being included in the traffic, excuse me, transportation impact assessment. The inclusion of that intersection was requested in a letter from the board to the applicant in a letter dated on August 6th. So I, I fully understand, given the, the traffic metrics, that that intersection would have been excluded from the study. However, if the board did specifically request it, we, as the peer review team, would respectfully request that information be provided so we can understand its overall impact in relation to the capacity and the safety of not only the existing roadway network, but as the network would look in the future with the project in place. One thing I also wanted to confirm was if there was any state action required as part of the project, if there would be any sort of permits that would be required outside of the town. And also, I did have some observations. I, I know this is the first meeting that traffic was being discussed, and there may have been other meetings where specific site plan-related items were discussed. And as part of our peer review assignment, we would look to, look at some of sort of the onsite circulation. I know there was a comment about the amenities on site and how that related to sort of the well-being of the residents on site once this, if and when this does get constructed. So we do have some, some typical things that we look at in terms of the site itself. And certainly there's some, you know, you know, hot topics in the industry these days as it relates to pickup and drop-off and rideshare use, you know, storage, locked storage for parcel delivery, things, onsite amenities such as, you know, dog parks and place to walk pets, open space and green space and things like that. So I'd want to make sure that, you know, as part of the, the site-related activities that that, that those be addressed and at least somehow tied in, back into as, as that relates to transportation assessment. And somebody did mention, you know, including onsite amenities such as, you know, coffee shops and stores and things like that. Generally in the industry, if you see those things onsite, it sort of reduces the, the need for onsite residents to go elsewhere for those amenities. And it's sort of a self-fulfilling prophecy that folks don't necessarily have to enter or exit the site as much because those, those amenities are onsite. One other thing I did want to mention is part of the, the trip generation that we mentioned in, both in terms of the vehicles per day and vehicles per the peak hour, the Institute of Transportation Engineers just released their newest version of the IT general, Trip Generation Manual in the last, I'd say month is probably pushing it. It's more like probably a few weeks. So we would ask that the applicant at least compare the information in the assessment to the latest information that's available. And I'm not necessarily suggesting that the applicant needs to go through the whole traffic analysis process and coming up with levels of service and trip distribution and all of that, but at least comparing if, if the traffic levels increased or decreased because I know, you know, based on the new data that ITE is, is addressing in sort of this sort of post-COVID world we're living in, is there increases, is there decreases? And, and so we just want to understand what that overall impact would look like. So that is about it from us. I don't know if the board has any specific questions. Again, I just want to reiterate that we will be formalizing a letter that puts together a lot of these comments, summarizes a lot of the comments that you heard today, and digs a little bit deeper into some of the specifics with respect to some of the traffic numbers, be that capacity, safety, pedestrian accommodations, vehicle accommodations and things like that. And I think a lot of the feedback that I heard this evening will be beneficial in us formalizing our letter.
All right. So I'm going to reserve asking any questions at this time, and I think it'd be most prudent that we wait for your report. Our next date that I announced was October 23rd. Would, would you have your report available by October 23rd?
Yes.
You'll have it available?
And, and our goal would be to have it available with sufficient time for the application team to review it, and that way they could come prepared with any comments. Not necessarily putting them on the spot in terms of them responding formally to the comments, but at least have an active dialogue and discussion at that meeting.
Is that a date that all our members are going to be available? Mr. Ewan?
Yes.
Balim?
Yes.
Attorney Faria?
Yes.
I'll be available as well. So I guess at this point in time, I'd, I'd entertain a motion and we could continue. I, public comment, I'm not going to take any further public comment on this at this time.
Michael.
What is it?
I'm just wondering if any of the, in the notes are, should be reviewed, needs to be reviewed, or up to the, for the chair, if you want to address.
All right, so about the subdivision plan and whatnot?
Yeah, so there's, there's issues about.
All right, so we, we still have some missing application materials, but that's not necessarily for them. I guess at this point I could call upon the petitioner. Petition is rep. Thank you. Thank you very much for your time. I, I think at this time I'm going to call upon the petitioner because there are a couple of the housekeeping concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Mr. Cusson? Or the representative? Counsel. Oh, you've got counsel.
Right. So I just wanted to kind of, I think that October 23rd is, is appropriate for further to get the peer review and if there's some more responses to hopefully get further down the tracks with respect to traffic. We also expect within the next week or so to have a full stormwater report in.
Okay.
And then we need to obviously coordinate, you know, there's some ongoing concerns from our side on peer review, but we hope that with the benefit of our stormwater report that we'll be able to fine-tune that process and hopefully resolve some of those ongoing concerns with respect to that. And then if there's time on the 23rd, maybe we could do some stormwater presentation. If not, then we'll do stormwater the next time along with general civil review, you know, in the, in the meeting following that. But that's the schedule as, as we see it in terms of the information that we're further rolling out here.
But we also need the subdivision plan finalized a little further along so that we can actually engage a, a peer review for the, for the subdivision plan. We're also got some water and sewer concerns for having something to meet up with DPW. Have you guys scheduled something with DPW on that?
For the record, Christian Farland, Principal Engineer and President of Farland Corp. The, the complete plan set with the stormwater and all the other details, we hope to have by, by next Friday.
Including the water and sewer as well?
Yes.
Okay. Well, also the list of waivers, we, we can't accept any blanket waivers. We need them to be specific and all laid out. Is that going to be provided to us? And just one other thing, I just need you to identify yourself on the record just so that we can have it so we can.
Sure. Jay, Jay Tallerman, Meade Tallerman and Costa counsel for the applicant. Yeah, we'll, we'll endeavor to tighten up. I'll work with Mr. Cusson to tighten up and, and Christian will tighten up and get more specific and granular on the waiver requests for submission there.
And there's one other concern, the right to access Fairway Drive, there'll be, I think, further information hopefully the next time?
I, I hope to, so, and, and I think that falls along two categories, whether or not it's going to be used for more regular access, in which case I, I think it's certainly due and owing that we would have to provide the necessary title information for emergency access just by the fire department. That's less of an issue from a legal perspective, but we are sensitive to the question and we have talked about it internally, and we'll get some information for the board on that.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If you don't mind. So one of the, one of the issues with being able to review the stormwater report or anything else that they have submitted or may submit is at this point, the applicant has only submitted funds for the traffic peer review and have objected to submitting any funds for the other peer reviews. And so that's, that's, that's also covered in your notes.
Well, what'll happen next time is this, this particular time, I believe that they only paid the funds for the peer review, I think it was what, on Tuesday?
Yep.
Today's what, Thursday? It was on Tuesday? If that were to happen again, then we're just going to continue the case for another date. We just won't hear it until we have the narrative complete from whatever the respective peer review is for that area.
Okay.
And, and with, with due respect, we're not objecting to paying for peer review. We just think that it will help develop a scope, an actual scope for NICH Engineering to see our, we want to revisit it once they see the materials provided by Farland and revisit it. We did feel that some of the proposed scopes and the amount of it were excessive, but they were done without the benefit of Mr. Farland's report. So we want to revisit it as soon as the report's in, and then we can work with you all on that, and hopefully we get to a resolution.
Mr. Chair, do you mind if I just, I just want to go over a few comments for the board? So, and you noted it at the beginning of the meeting, that current, current pursuant to the state and the zoning boards, 40B rules and regulations, you have, you have the ability to and the right to employ the consultants. Per the discussion at the last hearing, the, the town administrator's office, and I believe with your fellow board member reviewed the potential qualifications and decided on, on the team of peer reviewers. I don't, I don't believe, I have not heard that there's any objections to the qualifications of the peer review engineers. The issue with what Attorney Tallerman is saying is, oh, well, we want to submit our report, have the consultant review the report and then change their scope, but there's no money for the consultant to review the report.
That's not what we're saying.
So, well, okay, I'm sorry if I misunderstood. So the issue here is, and it's in the state regulations and it's in the local regulations pursuant to the state regulations, that the failure of the applicant to submit funds when they're needed by the board and their peer review engineers could result in a, a denial of, of the permit. And so at this point in time, whether they agree with the amounts, whether they agree with the scope or not, it is premature for them to be protesting against the amounts because no work's been done. It may be that much, it may be less, it may be more. And my recommendation is, and the, and the regulations and your own rules and regs allow for the payment of the peer review funds to be the entirety of the amount or portions of the amount. And it's, there's just no ability even for the staff to engage with NICH Engineering with respect to their civil review or for STANTEC to even look at the report that they're talking about submitting next week without some amount of funds being deposited next week. So if, if it pleases the board, I would recommend that at least some percentage of the peer review funds be deposited as soon as possible. And I defer to the board on the percentage, but I would suggest 50% of the amounts in the proposals be deposited so that the peer reviewers can start, start their work. So I, I just wanted to share that for your consideration.
Thank you. All right. So is there anything you'd like to add to that, sir?
Yeah, and, and, and that's the first time I'm hearing about a, a partial, and I think we'd be amenable to partial. I still think there needs to be some discussion, good faith discussion on the STANTEC proposal in particular. And I'm, we're happy to have that. We're not resisting peer review at all. I'm glad to hear because that was not the message that we received from the town administrator's office. We receive, pay $183,000. If we can get this started by putting earnest money down on the Judith Nitch review, which is next up, then we're happy to do that. I think we do have to have a conversation about STANTEC, but I'm not trying to rush that or create disputes where we don't have them.
All right. But I will say this, just, and I don't, I don't want to get into the competitive part of this, just, I'd rather, if you guys can work it out, great. And if you're willing to pay one half, then I'll take that as a representation that your client will pay one half, one half of, on each, on each of these.
I think that, well, NICH has two components. There, it's roughly $100,000, which is, I think, I, I do, what I don't want to do is spend my time debating about housing appeals committee rules because they're more complex than, than Attorney Murphy says. And I don't think it's a good use of your time to have two attorneys arguing about these things. We intend to earnestly contribute so Judith Nitch can get started here. You've designated a, a member to work with us and, and work with Ms. Murphy on it. We intend to do just that. I will work with my team. We want to make sure Judith Nitch can get a start in this. Obviously, we fully funded traffic, even though the study amount was double what an original study was. We're willing to work, we want to work on this with the board. We're not saying no. I've emailed several times with Ms. Murphy, Attorney Murphy, and, and we haven't said no once.
Okay.
So.
Well, I just don't want it to be a situation where two days before the hearing, that's when our, our peer reviewer is being paid or money's being set so that we can actually engage them, and now we have to wait another date in order for them to provide a report. So if that's going to happen, that's going to happen in the future. We're just not going to conduct the hearing. We'll just continue it so that we can have both experts on the same footing, fully prepared. Is that fair to you?
Well, I, I understand the board's position.
Okay. Fair enough.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I don't want to prolong, but you did authorize one member with respect to the other application, but you didn't actually do the authorization with respect to this application.
Oh, I think they did. They did.
So.
Are you saying we did?
So for, for the.
Hold on, I think it's the other way around.
Oh, no, it was the other way around. I'm sorry. Thank you.
We did it on, we did it on this one. We didn't do it on Sherbrooke.
Yes, you're correct. I'm sorry. And they keep saying that they'll put in money towards NICH, but not towards STANTEC. And I, I would recommend that the board state that even for STANTEC to look at what they're going to submit, to determine whether or not the scope needs to change, there needs to be money in the account for STANTEC. So if, if it, if it's okay with the chair and the board, if we can work between the staff, the town administrator's office, and your designated member will figure that out.
I think we have an answer fixed to this. If they don't put the money in the account, they're not going to be heard.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
It stops here.
The question is, they're going to put the full amount? Is that what we said?
They can put.
I mean, I think to be, to be fair, probably the first review is not going to be more than one-third of the, of the, of the review of the whole project. And to be fair also to the applicant, I mean, we, we wanted to expedite the process, so we didn't, you know, we didn't.
We didn't require them to have full plans or full set of everything.
We truly have to build, to compare if you only have one. So it might be very fair proposal, but we don't know if you can compare it to any other proposal. But we wanted to expedite the process and work with the applicant. So I think at this time, I think maybe it's fair to say, maybe it's not going to exceed one-third of, of, of the whole review, and maybe we can come up with a number. And once that number's up, we, we'll tell you, you know, that you, we need to replenish the account.
And I fully appreciate the, the good faith effort there. I do think with respect to the STANTEC one, we may provide a little bit of a, of a memorandum as to why we think some of that scope maybe could be refined a little bit, given what we have in front of us. But again, I'm not trying to rush to conclusions on this. Our goal is to continue to work with you earnestly to get this done.
Thank you. All right. So just before we move on to the next case, I'd like to read into the record just the fact that we have received three letters from town residents. I'm not going to read the letters because they're quite lengthy, but they've all been read by the members here. One of them is from Louise Travas of Four Northfield Lane in Dartmouth. Another is from Christina Bruin, also of, this one is of Two Northfield Lane in Dartmouth. And one from Karen Everett. She doesn't state exactly where she's from. She indicates she's a town resident. So we've got Karen Everett, who also sent us a letter. And we've got one from Louis A. White of 12 Northfield Lane in Dartmouth. So we've all acknowledged that we received those. You don't have those?
I don't have those.
Oh, okay. Well, they'll be provided to you. All right. Sure. Sure. Once they're entered in the record, they're part of the, the public record, so I'll enter them. So you, you can have them.
What else did you say?
No, just like a copy of those.[1777.54]
The fire department. That's in the portal. That's in the portal.
Yeah, it's part of the comments that were provided from Conservation DPW and Fire Department. All right. So at this time, so we can move on to the next matter.
Do you need to have a motion regarding the monies?
Yes, I would think so.
That they want to pay the monies?
You want to advance some?
Or you don't let them do it? If you guys want to put forth a motion.
Put an amount?
You said a third or whatever it must be.
One third. Yeah.
Want to make a motion that we advance one-third of the?
No, that they pay one-third into the town of Dartmouth for purposes of peer review, something along those lines.
For each of the outstanding contracts?
You want to do it that way? Sure.
You guys agree on that?
Yeah. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I make a motion that we require the petitioners to pay in one-third of each of the peer reviews outstanding bills to the town at this point in time.
All in favor? I did a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. All right. So at this point in time, I entertain a motion and we continue this matter to October 23rd. Okay, now, hold on. Where's the location going to be? I think we can do this back at, I think we can do this back at town hall. Yeah, I think we're going to have a usual venue. So I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we continue comprehensive permit ZC MP 25-1 to October 23rd at 6:00 at the town hall.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. All right, moving on to the second matter that we have on.
Town hall.
Moving on to the second matter that we have on tonight's meeting, comprehensive permit ZC MP-25-2. The petitioner is Robert Lincoln. Owner is Sherbrook Farms LLC. Subject property is 498 Old Westport Road, also known as MAP 48, Lot 29. It's located within a single residence speed district. It's already been advertised. We had a motion to waive the reading of the abutters list. Folks, we're still in session. Excuse me. We're still in session. Thank you. Matter was legally advertised on August 7th and August 14th. We waived the reading of the abutters list by motion. In this case, the petitioner is seeking a comprehensive permit pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40B, comprehensive permit guidelines 760 CMR 56.0 from the Massachusetts General Laws and Dartmouth zoning bylaw regulations. The petitioner is proposing a development on approximately 81.8 acres to be known as Sherbrook Farms, to be located at 498 Old Westport Road. The development will have a total of 156 units of rental housing, including 39 affordable units. The petitioner applicant is requesting waivers from the following zoning bylaws. I'm not going to read all the waivers into the record. So at this time, I'm going to call upon the petitioner or their representative to state their case.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Okay, the mic's not. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tanya Trevison with the firm of Marioni, Shaughnessy &amp; Udi, representing the applicant and developer, Sherbrook Farms LLC. This, based on the last hearing that you all had, I understand that this particular presentation is going to be more of an in-depth review of the project itself. The traffic study, as you know, has been completed, but we have not yet entered into an agreement as far as a peer review consultant with the town, but we're prepared to do so. The storm water, the storm water report is, will be forthcoming. That is not quite finished yet. So I'm going to start here. We do have a slideshow presentation for the audience this evening, as well as the board. So this is 498 Old Westport Road. This is a concept of the proposed development, which will be four three-story colonial-style wood-framed buildings, each with a central elevator, constructed on a concrete slab. There will be 38 units per building, 50,353 square feet per building, and approximately 47 feet in height to the ridge. This will be a total of 152 units, 44 one-bedrooms, 93 two-bedrooms, 15 three-bedrooms, for a total of 275 bedrooms. 38, sorry, 39 of the units will be designated as affordable and eight of the units will be designated as handicap accessible. I know previously the board had requested square footage for each of the types of units, the one, two, and three bedrooms. The plans are currently being revised, so we will have those numbers for you hopefully at the next hearing date. So the current conditions of the site, which is approximately 90 acres on three parcels of land, it's mostly undeveloped, as you can see. The site's previously been used as a gravel and sand excavation business. There are also ponds and wetlands on the property. However, there will be limited impact to any of the wetlands. There are no residential butters to the left, the right, or the rear of the property. And as you can see, across the street on Old Westport Road, there are some single-family Currently, the site is undergoing some preparation work. There, as you can see, lots of demolition, there's a lot of concrete block debris. Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, that's the DEP, is aware. There is no hazardous waste that is known to be on the premises. There has been some concern, I understand, about crushed, the crushing of the stone. The neighbors are concerned, I understand, about the noise associated with that. The developer intends to retain a contractor that estimates the crushing of the stone would take approximately one week. The crushed stone is intended to be reused on the project site for sewer lines and other amenities. The contractor is bonded and will ensure dust control is mitigated as well. This slide, although difficult to see from a distance, depicts the environmental conditions on the property. The developer has met with the Conservation Commission twice so far. The project will not encroach on any wetlands. And the consultant recently refreshed the flags and all the filings with the Conservation Commission are on schedule. With regard to the wetlands, there are two parking areas within the 50-foot, 200-foot buffer area, measuring approximately 3,000 square feet. So, and again, the Conservation Commission is aware. Currently in process, there is some contaminated soil and one hotspot from a former diesel tank that's going to be dug up and disposed of. There is demolition of two metal buildings in preparation for subsurface due diligence. There are several test pits for final civil engineering and stormwater plans. There's a geo-probe drilling for geotechnical engineering. And as I said before, conservation filings will be made from the wetlands consultant. So this slide depicts an engineering plan of the current conditions on the property. It outlines the brush, the bordering vegetative wetlands, and the remains of some of the older This depicts the planting plan. I understand that there's concern from the butters across the street about the view of the property and the development upon completion. The amount of buffering vegetation will be the same as or more than there is today. The developer has ordered a rendering to provide an elevation view from across the street. Those take approximately four to five weeks to produce, so we intend to have that depiction at a future meeting. So you'll be able to actually see what the neighbors across the street will be seeing from their point of view.
You say you have that plan again?
Four weeks.
Four weeks?
Four to five.
The plan, we just ordered it yesterday. I had a conversation with your land use council about that and thought it would be helpful to better understand what the project will look like from that perspective. So we did order one. The company is located in the UK and they do take quite a bit of time, but it will be worth the wait and we will have that for you.
Thank you.
Yep. The buffer at the east side is about 80 feet to the rear, 10 feet at the road. There will be an existing tree canopy there. The west side will have over 600 feet of buffer, the north side over 1,000 feet of buffer, and the south-facing street side will have 10 to 15 feet of the existing There's been some concern about light overflow at night, so the developer has proposed 20-foot shielded post lamps. So this is a photometric lighting plan, which depicts an aerial view of what the lighting will look like from the night. And as you can see, it will ensure that no light spillage would impact the butters. So the next few slides are depictions of the clubhouse, which is located at the entrance of the project, right off of Old Westport Road. The clubhouse is going to be about 4,600 square feet. This slide depicts the main building of the clubhouse. The footprint will be a central gathering area for the residents that will include the mailroom, a fitness area, a function room, kitchen, leasing office, and the manager's And this slide depicts the outdoor pavilion and bike storage that is associated just off of the main clubhouse building. So while we don't have a rendering of the exact development as proposed, this is an actual photograph of the Webster Village Apartments in Hanover, Massachusetts, that the developer had recently completed. It's anticipated that this development will look very similar to this project. At the last hearing, we discussed how the height of the buildings is going to be reduced because the roofs are going to be flat instead of pitched, as were depicted in the original plans. So the flat roof with the parapets is intended to reduce the massing and the height and also provide for an opportunity to have a solar array on the roof if that is going to be installed. So these are just other views of the Hanover project.
You'll have an opportunity to speak, sir.
So that concludes the overview of the project, and I'm happy to answer any of the board's questions at this time.
You answered the question. I was going to ask about the, I know that, either I read it or I had heard at some point that there was some thought about utilizing the roof space for solar receptors, but you just, you've indicated that. Gentlemen, you have any questions?
No questions.
I have no questions at this time.
I have none at this time.
All right. So at this time, I'm going to open it up to public comment. There was a gentleman, there was a gentleman that's been waiting patiently here. Just need you to identify yourself, name and address, and you can ask any questions directly to the board, please.
Brian Medurus, 515 Old Westport Road, live across the street. When you said there was no hazardous material, I've lived there all my life. How come the other developers in the past that have applied to build there all bailed out? Can you answer that question?
Okay, so I can tell you this. She did indicate that there's one hotspot.
Ah, there's more than one hotspot.
Well, the thing is, I'm not an expert in that area.
Well, I'm going to tell you something. I was there the other day when that scientist engineering firm was there. I even asked, like, is this scientific? When they were doing the runoff study. They picked up the dirt and folded it in their hand and went like this. That was so scientific. I'm a farmer. I do that in the springtime, when the dirt, when the dirt's wet and dry. That's scientific?
Well, I think that there you have to, let me just say this.
So I want to know how many of these developers that came in and bailed out? How come? I'm going to tell you why. I've lived there. I saw the trucks coming in every single day. And there's, there's bylaws, there's laws on that, because what they were bringing in, someone, boy, the hell, wasn't paying attention. Same thing down at Bliss Corner. Same thing in Hicksville Road. Same thing on Old Fall River Road. All this, all this hazardous material that the town brings in, right across the street from me. I don't know what, where you get your information from.
All right, so all I can tell you is this. She indicated that there's one hotspot.
Yeah.
You also said there were other people that wanted to purchase the property and they didn't buy it. I know one of them came before this board, not that many years ago, and wanted to use an excavation business and operated out of that.
Yeah, well, that's.
Hold on, no, no, no. I don't know if you were there, but there were neighbors that were there that were vehemently opposed to that petition. The gentleman was denied the ability to conduct the same operation that they were conducting there for decades. It was denied. This board denied that. All right, so that answers at least one of your questions.
Okay.
All right.
Now.
No, do you have another question?
Oh, yeah.
No, no, you got to direct it to me.
Oh, I got a few questions.
All right.
Don't forget, I'm living across the street from this.
I get that.
You're not. I am.
I get that.
These are my neighbors here. We got to live with this shit.
Well.
All right?
I'd appreciate if you would.
So listen to me, okay? I got the floor, I got the microphone. Let me speak.
I have to let you speak, sir.
All right? The other question I have for you, that they should have brought up, that was a snow job that last meeting. What about the infrastructure? What about the sewage? Can this town handle that? Can it, answer me. Where's the DPW guy? This is boy, the hell, thought.
This is a process. I indicated this in the beginning. I don't know if you were here, but I read a dissertation to everyone, and it's a process. Tonight, they're just giving us a further in-depth overview of the project. We're going to discuss traffic, we're going to discuss water and sewer, and we're going to discuss environmental concerns, and we're going to discuss stormwater. That's all going to be in other hearings. This case is going to be continued to October 30th. They're going to provide us further information. I don't know if they're going to engage an expert at that point. We're going to discuss what's going to happen with regard to, I don't know which one they want to handle first, but we'll discuss that as to which of these sciences they want to handle first. Is it traffic or is it your environmental concern?
You understand that the town wells are not that far away from this project.
I understand that there are town wells.
There's a test pit right in the middle of this. Has the town, has the town taken any samples out of that test pit?
I can't answer that. So we're going to be dealing with environmental concerns at a later date. So stay tuned, Mr. Chair.
Stay tuned. Yeah, this is just going to be prolonged until, until there's nobody in here and it's passed.
I don't, I didn't create the process, sir. I didn't create the process.
Okay.
All right.
You got it, Jim.
Kudos go out to the zoning board of.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Jim Costa, 459 Old Westport Road. Kudos go out to our zoning board of appeal for posting all the information on your website, the plans and all the other information. And congratulations to Mr. Lincoln, who's got his new startup, his LLC, for this project. So this project, I petitioned, I was one of the petitioners to the state for the public involvement plan. Over 45 people, I believe. And in the public involvement plan, there was guidelines on how this was. And in the public involvement plan, there was guidelines on how this was gonna go down. And we were supposed to be notified when the property got sold or bought. We didn't get notified. The contact list in the eight years has never been updated. And demolition work had started to be done, and that was, we were supposed to get notified when all of these things happened. So, my question is, the first question, when are we gonna have a public involvement plan meeting?
I'm not certain what he's discussing, but does anyone on this board understand what he's raising?
I'm not familiar with that. Are you, is this in, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Is this in connection with the solid waste and the operations that were going on there, as opposed to this particular project?
This is a DEP.
This is a DEP question. Okay. You know, I don't know if their council can answer all of this. I did, as she mentioned, speak to her, talking about the various elevations, et cetera, that the board would like to see and be able to make. And I also indicated to her, if the board wishes, and you did mention it, Mr. Chair, that if, if the applicant would bring, it's a DEP, it's a state process, it's not technically under the 40B, but there's a lot of public concern. If the board wishes to ask the applicant if they're willing to bring their environmental consultant to a future meeting, then they can maybe respond to all these questions. But their council, I don't know if she's able to answer some of the questions tonight.
Well, we've already had two people raise concerns about some environmental potential ramifications on the site. I think it would be most prudent that we have someone here on your behalf to explain that away.
Agreed. I agree.
Fair enough. Right, so we're gonna answer that at a later date, sir.
Okay, so that information is available, what's the, the plan, the public involvement plan is available, December 3rd, 2018, on the DEP website. And it goes through when the meetings will be held, and the questions that were not answered, that were supposed to be answered in Phase 3 and Phase 4. Next, if I could have a print-up of the site plan on the thing, I've got a pointer, I can point out some items to you.
Oh, I can.
Yeah, just the first, the first site plan you put on.
The first one.
I got a pointer. I don't want to hit you. Okay, so I just wanna point out a few things, my previous, the neighbor mentioned about hazardous waste. I've only been there 35 years. And if you go through this site, I can tell you where some of the stuff might be buried that you don't know about or you never looked for. The, the initial site investigation by the first prospective buyer, he kinda like changed his mind once he saw what he had to do, what was going on here. So I'll start with the left side of this print. Okay, so this area here, there used to be three ponds and a natural spring right here. That area has all been filled in, and some of the neighbors in this room will tell you, if you stand anywhere in this area, you'll start sinking in some clay or water. There's something underneath here, and he's capped it off like a dump, a waste site with clay or sand. The spring is no longer flowing, there's, so that's this area here. Back here, right in this area here, the previous owner took in wood chips and said he was going into the landscaping business. But he proceeded to take sewage sludge, mix it with the wood chips, the neighbors got wind of it, and called the Board of Health and recorded the direction, the temperature, the time, and the date, and the wind direction. But this pile here is not topsoil, and it's covered with vegetation now. That's formerly wood chips with sludge from the sewer treatment plant and maybe some Going back here, someone was caught dumping painted concrete, asphalt, ABC, and the town conservation officer and the building department got wind of it and had him remove it, but there might be some stuff left here. The whole project, the whole site plan here is covered with foundry sand, with metals and oils. And the way you get rid of foundry sand, you dump it onto the bottom of the pit and the trunks drive over it and they push it down. The, back here is the 60 yards, or tons, no, 60 yards of rebarred concrete. One of the questions I'll be asking is, before they start doing anything with this concrete, can it be tested for asbestos? That would be required, the town would have to require that, I believe. Over here, this is the steel building in the back, there used to be 55-gallon storage drums on the ground here. And in the front story, maintenance building, was, there was also 55-gallon storage drums on the ground. I don't know what happened to those. Across the front here, he excavated, this whole property has been mined out, he excavated right to all the property lines, and supposed to leave a 75-foot buffer, I believe, and he excavated right to all the property lines, including the town road, right in this area here, from the left of the entrance, all the way down to the pond that's not in the After he dug out, excavated that area, he took in some building debris, looked like factory, factory timbers and roofing, and all that, he took his machine and pushed it into the pond, the pond he created, and then he covered it with big boulders. He excavated so close to the road here, if the DPW was here, they could tell you that somebody had to repair either the road or north of the, north of the road where it started to cave, 'cause he had excavated to more than three foot, three by one foot excavate, it's very steep. Okay, then these man-made ponds over here, these, she, they never mentioned the man-made ponds, everything is man-made ponds here. Some of them were excavated down to 75 feet. This is definitely gonna be a danger hazard for anybody in here. The fire department can tell you about a story where, where somebody took their horse down there and had to be pulled out with a crane because he couldn't get out of the They excavated so close to the road here, there's no room for a sidewalk anymore. I hope they have sidewalks to access this place, but it's gonna have to be a boardwalk because the soil is gone. After he put the demolition material down, he put some boulders here to reinforce this bank. They're not laid in like the new Bedford dyke, they're laid in like, just thrown there. It could be dangerous for some kids to start flipping those boulders around.
So how, sir, how long did you, did you say you've lived in that area?
35.
And you've witnessed all this transpire?
I witnessed all this.
All right. Have you reported any of this to, like, the Board of Health?
Yes, I reported the, my neighbors and I reported, as we mentioned, about the.
And what did they do as a result of you reporting this?
He said he had no policing ability to go on the property, however, somebody from the DPW went down there and shut it down.
Okay. And what about, did you call, did you call any other government agency about your concerns?
I thought the town had this under control, I was new.
I mean, you're new, you've been for 35 years.
I've been there for 35 years, but all this happened years ago. Or most of this happened years ago, yep.
Did you ever contact DEP about any of this?
Later on I did, once I figured out what was going on.
And what have they done?
They put him, they have a group of standards they have to meet.
So they're gonna have, they're gonna address those concerns?
No, because they're not, the only concern they're addressing is the oil spill, and there were floor drains in those buildings that dumped some material down, and that's what they're going for, the oil and the floor drills and the contaminated water.
I'm sorry.
So my question would be, can the town request to have those concrete piles before they start working on them and breaking them up, or whatever they're gonna do, to be tested for asbestos?
Absolutely. This is part of their environmental, I'm sorry, but this is, yep.
Okay.
That's why, we can't, right now, I think we don't know what's going on. I think it's better if we wait till, till we get the environmental engineer on board and tell us what's going on and what their plans are to remediate that site. If it's a DEP site, I'm sure they're under remediation where they have to comply with certain. As this board, we will not issue a permit unless we can for sure that this is a suitable site to be, to, for residents to live on. So that would be part of the conditions. They have to, in construction, they have to excavate, they'll have an LSP on site, they have to test the soil, like we did with the other 40B. This is the normal procedure. So again, I don't know the, the history of the site and what's going on, but be sure that this is what we go through.
I hope so. I hope you do that, because people are gonna be living here.
Absolutely.
For the town water, my concern is also the town water. And all of their paperwork to the DEP, sorry, all of their paperwork to the DEP, there's nothing mentioned about a second well. There's nothing mentioned about the Penelly wells, north of this, where the natural water flows north. And Penelly, the cone of influ, the cone of influence around the well will be pulling water, this is a zone to aquifer. So I would like to see, or can we have an expansion of the radius to see how far the contaminated water is going towards Penelly? That's what I'd be looking for.
Well, I can say this, in the preserve, which is the 286 units on Route 6, there were significant environmental concerns there. So they had an expert, we engaged an expert, and there was quite a bit of competition, if you will, between the two as to what level of testing needed to be done and what level of remediation needed to be done. And I think that that has, ultimately, they agreed to.
Absolutely.
A point in which was something that was approved by DEP and agreeable between the two consultants. And that has, that caused that project to be delayed by at least two years, I would say. Not that it has significant relevance, but I don't know where this would be any different from that. And obviously, there's gonna be DEP involvement, from what I understand, there already is DEP involvement.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So just a couple of points. First, Mr. Micho, from your health department, he is very, just, and so that the gentleman knows, he is very aware of all these issues, and he issued a letter both that went to Mass Housing in connection with the site eligibility comments, and he actually just submitted another letter that came today. I think it may have just been uploaded to the portal, so I'm sure the applicant hasn't. So Mr. Micho is aware, and he, he has been flagging these. DP, to the extent, you know, that they've been reviewing this, and the gentleman referenced there's a Phase 3, a Phase 4, that means they're kind of very deep into this process. I, I think that the board's request that if the applicant would bring their, you know, LSP, their environmental professional, to come and just walk the board through what's happening. You know, DP is also going to require that if there's any contamination, that it be cleaned up to what a residential standard, that's a regulatory requirement. So I, I think that, you know, that the amount of information that the gentleman has from living there is, is incredible, because he lived across the street and he watched it all. But I, I think to have, also have the environmental, and then see if, if the, if the board wishes, I could also take a look at what's been filed with DEP, because it's all available online, so if you would like.
Absolutely.
I could also take a look, and I could confer with the applicant's counsel, so if, if you would like, I can talk with her and then discuss when they're gonna come in and, you know, kind of walk through all this with the board, with that. Yep.
What's your name again, Mr. Coste, is it?
Jim Coste.
So there was a letter that was just issued today. I didn't have an opportunity to review it, but it came from our Board of Health, it's dated September 25th. I've not read it, I know it was just handed to me when I walked in here today. It's a letter from Mr. Micho, who's our director of Board of Health. He refers to solid waste, he's looking at, I'm just paraphrasing here, site history, 60,000 cubic yards of unprocessed concrete rubble. He's referring here to solid waste regulation, the mass DEP applied to the site, preliminary remediation proposal, you got, you have 27 test pits evaluating the ABC rubble, the forecast suitability, the processing of ABC rubble. I've got remediation considerations for solid waste site compliance. I've got mass DEP listed release site and historic uses of sand and gravel pits. So it's a, it's a five and a half page letter, I think it's a six and a half page letter, and it refers to CMRs with air pollution and whatnot. Obviously, I'd give you, I'll give you this.
No, 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 no.
But you go on site.
Yeah, I'll go on your site.
If you want one, we'll give you a copy of it. And I will, I have not read this yet, it was just produced, I guess, this afternoon. So obviously, the concerns that you're raising, someone in town is well aware of them, I'm not aware of them, other than what's been represented to us. Certainly, there are concerns that our Board of Health agent is wanting, is wanting us to be, one, aware of, two, to have some concern over, and address.
So I'm just looking for a bigger radius towards those wells, for more testing.
I'll be honest with you, I'm gonna defer to when we have an expert, based on this, we're gonna be engaging an environmental peer review expert.
Okay.
And when we have them, you can ask that question specifically through me, for them to answer, and if they feel that that's a prudent request, then they're probably gonna ask for it. Okay?
All right, fine. Good.
What else? No, just.
No, no.
Oh, that's fine. So let's do this, just because we don't have, I know you have a lot of questions, but we don't have the people to answer those questions, and I'm not the one to answer them.
Yeah.
So I'm sure I'm gonna see you again, right? We're gonna be putting this for October 30th, but the problem is, is we may not have scheduled for October 30th the peer review for environmental issues, might be doing something else. We're gonna try to do some of that now, we're gonna, we're gonna sort of hone that out with their council. And I know there's, oh, there's another gentleman here, but I think it was that gentleman had a comment before, but I'll let you speak, 'cause you've been standing first, I'll let you speak, and then you can come up as well, sir. Mr. Coste?
46 Eliza Lane, North Dartmouth, Mass. Just two quick questions. This is a big parcel, I'm not sure if the developer's buying all the parcel, and if they are, what are they doing with the balance of the parcel, is, will there be a deed restriction on it, or is it gonna be donated? It looks like most of the project's being concentrated to the southeast of the, of the project area. So I didn't know if there was any plans for the balance of the, of the parcel. Second question is, there'd be short-term lease restrictions, just to prevent it, like, turning into, from student housing for the college or anything like that.
Okay. Can you address that?
So I can't address, so there are 90 acres on three parcels, right? So it's, this is the only piece that's going to be developed that, that I did the presentation on, so there's not that I'm aware of to be any other development, or I'm not aware of any gifting or conservation restriction or anything, but.
The town to get possession of those parcels to protect the wellhead area, if they're not gonna be developed and they have no plans for them. Or deed restriction would be good, too.
Thank you. All right, there was another gentleman. Oh, you were next, sir, white shirt.
I think as we go through this, I'm beginning to really understand what 40B is. And 40B is just a way for a developer to.
I just need the name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jack Lyons, Strawberry Lane. It's just a way for a developer to skirt local zoning board to line their pockets. Because if they truly wanted to build 40B housing, why are we taking such a small percentage of what's being built? And we wanna be good to our communities and help people get into housing, why is so little of it for affordable housing? But my big concern here is, I live in a piece of, parcel of property, two acres, I can't cover more than 51% of my land with impervious ground cover. Why? Because it's a main, this area is the main recharge area for our aquifer. These are six of the most productive wells in the town. They produce probably greater than 50% of the water that we consume in town. So the environmental concerns that come up here are not small, they're huge. Because we're gonna benefit one developer to possibly the detriment of the whole town. If all of a sudden 50% of our water capacity went away because of contaminants or potential for contaminants, where would we be? And as we as a town have zoning bylaws, that makes this a resident, I think it's Resident B housing. And as we as a town have zoning bylaws, that makes this a resident, I think it's resident B housing, you can only have one house or one, I mean, we all, you know what the zoning is.
It's 80,000 square feet, 200 feet of front end.
Exactly. And why is a single homeowner responsible to follow those guidelines? And the developers is not? Because there's a backdoor that the state has developed for low-income housing. And the other problem is, a gentleman from the project before indicated how lucky he was to get into town and bought an affordable development, Meadowwood. Why is that no longer considered affordable housing? Affordable housing comes off the affordable housing rolls over time. We would probably be above the 10% if the affordable housing that was built in town years ago was still on the rolls. And if you think of the town of Dartmouth, Meadowwood, my daughter just bought a house in the neighborhood, it's still affordable housing. So why doesn't it count? So my big thing is, though, I live very close to where this is happening. I'm more concerned about the detriment to the whole town as far as well contamination. And you were a little disingenuous when you put up your first map and said there are no abutters next to this property. There are abutters to this property. Direct abutters to this property. So if you don't know what surrounds your property, maybe you shouldn't be making the presentation in the first place.
Sir, you can direct that to me, okay?
Okay.
So are you referring to the fact that there are people across the street?
No, there were people right next door. There's a house that was just sold.
On the east, on the east side of the property?
Yes, there was a house that was just sold within the last month. I bet that person doesn't even know this is happening.
Well, they have to receive notice if it's within a certain amount of footage. So if it's within.
Well, there are direct abutters.
If it's within 300 feet, then they would receive notice.
But there are direct abutters, there are numerous direct abutters.
There's actually a list that would put forth that we have, and they bought it a month ago. So if they bought it a month ago, it's possible that they didn't get the notice.
Exactly.
Went to the old.
And when we look at, and we, we look at the notification list for the neighborhoods and which houses got notification, what's happening here? I'm the only one on my street that got anything. Why am I the only one on the street? There's not houses on my street. I'm the only one that got anything.
Within 300 feet, yeah.
Yeah. There's, there's.
300 feet, within 300 feet, you would get notified.
Well, there are five houses that are closer than I am. That didn't get any notification. If you look at Lucy Little Road, which is directly across, there's only about four homes on Lucy Little Road that got notification. Karen Lane, which is right there, there's one home on Karen Lane that got notification.
Well, these are large lots, sir, sometimes just one home is the immediate abutter and that's the.
Karen Lane's a hell of a lot closer than I am.
I can't speak to that directly, but obviously, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much, sir.
All right.
Is there anyone else?
Okay, Clara Barlow.
Yeah, your name, please?
Clara Barlow.
Yes.
454 Old Westport Road. I own the acreage behind this, behind the north side and the east side of this plot.
Okay.
It's wetlands. I've owned it for 72 years. And for 72 years, I've held on to it because I thought it was essential to the water supply of Dartmouth. And I know if I were to sell it, they'd drain it and put something on there. For 72 years, I've watched them use this property for a dump. They buried trucks, horses, cars, beer cans, cement, rebar, all kinds of crap. And it's been allowed. People have gotten away with it. And now that property is full of custard dents and other things that are not healthy, especially for young children. So my concern is, what protections are going to be made for Dartmouth's water supply? For the wetlands that are behind there? And for all the other stuff that's not good for us, that's been allowed to put in there? I cannot fathom why anyone would want to build houses on that piece of property and have young children live in them.
Thank you. Yes, if you could just identify, name and address, please.
Norman DeSova, 523 Old Westport Road. Could I ask the young lady to please put the rendition of what the property's going to look like back up there? You had a, the, um, buildings themselves.
The buildings, okay.
You had.
Maybe the first one?
Example, exactly. Uh, on the, on the environmental side, I do know for a fact that the last person that was, um, going to develop that, this property, put five test wells in and three flunked.
And three what?
Three flunked. In other words, the wa, the groundwater was not acceptable for building. And I got that from the engineers who were doing them, they told me that. Number two, people say, well, you're just against 40B housing. That's not true. I'm against that. I live in a single-family B residence. You want to put houses, small houses, even 40Bs, like they're going to do at Hawthorne, and I'm against Hawthorne too. But I mean, if you want to put something that looks like that, that's fine. Are they better than us? Why can't they get a nice-looking suburban little development? And we get that.
Michael Williams, 497 Old Westport Road. I live right in front of this place. I'm wondering if they've done any sort of study on what the traffic, or headlight is going to be like coming into my house, all these cars in and out? The road noise is just going to be unbearable. I'm wondering if there's been any study done on that. Nobody's come to my house to try to listen or look or done anything, so just curious.
So obviously, there's going to be traffic studies that are going to be done along Old Westport Road, the intersection with Cross Road, intersection with Ch, with Chase and Old Westport where that meets, I'm sure. But I don't know whether or not that's going to be the next thing we're going to discuss. Do the board members have any preference as to what we should address next? Should it be the environmental concerns? Should it be the, uh, the?
We have to do them all, so.
We do have to do them all. Do we want to be consistent where if one project we're doing traffic, we're going to do traffic with this one? Or do, or because of the fact that the environmental concerns may be greater than what we initially thought, maybe we should go and shift gears with that first?
I think so, I think we'll probably start with the environmental, right?
So, council?
So, Mr. Chair, um, so the traffic study has been completed. Uh, so that was what we thought was going to come up next. Um, the stormwater and everything, uh, was going to be contingent on the cleanup of the property because they were going to bring all the heavy equipment in at once to be able to test and, and do the engineering at that point. So I, I think the environmental and the stormwater would be, um.
Okay. All right.
Easier to do later.
So I guess the headlights, well, that's something we'll address to see whether or not there's another way to create a buffer or something, or maybe the direction of the entrance? So people sort of, the cars come in at an angle or leave at an angle versus coming straight out?
It's the noise as well. The noise from Lucy Little.
Well, they'll, they'll do, well, maybe they'll do that analysis as well, but at this point, we're just going to do traffic. We're probably going to do that on the 30th?
Yep.
So on the 30th, we'll address traffic. I'm sorry, couldn't hear you.
Uh, they talked about leaving the vegetation in place. What guarantee do we have of them leaving that in? It's not.
When we approve a plan, and if it shows plantings at a certain location, that has to be done in order for the project to receive its certificate of occupancy, so to speak, or completion.
So if they choose to clear the vegetation and grow new trees, they're allowed to do that?
Yeah, that's probably what they're going to end up doing. But I don't know, let's, we'll see what that plan shows as well. And you'll be able to address that concern when we come, when we arrive at that, um, at that issue, when they present it. All right? Thank you. All right, so, if there's anyone else, I'll, I'll take another, another comment. But tonight's not the last night. There are going to be many other issues that we're going to be addressing. But the only thing I can say about the environmental issues is, whatever exists and is discovered, they're going to have to address. The project will be cleaner than it is today in order for them to be able to build. So in the end, I think the environment will be better served when this is done versus where it stands right now. If the concerns are as great as people believe them to be. Uh, and they may be completely accurate. I know that jet, that gentleman there has some specific, uh, knowledge, uh, that he, that he's addressed to us. You have one more question, come on up, I'll give you an opportunity. But again, tonight's not the last night, sir.
Thank you. What time are they supposed to be allowed to start excavating and construction over there?
We're not even, we're not even there yet.
Well, they've been demolition, demolishing buildings.
Oh, the demolition, that.
That has nothing to do with that.
At this point, that's a building permit. They, they apply, it's actually a demolition permit. They apply for a demolition permit, even before they do that, they'll do an environmental assessment. They have to send an LSP there to do environmental assessment, is there any asbestos in the asphalt or any glazing? There's any PCBs? They do that assessment before they can actually bring the building down. That's just the policy, that's not with this project, that's with any project in the town, in, in the town of Dartmouth. I think most towns in the state of Massachusetts.
Heavy equipment over there at 7 o'clock in the morning.
So, Mr. Chair, I do think that there is some work going out there, and I, I, I'm assuming that the building commissioner.
Well, I presume, I, I assume that they have a demolition permit.
Yes.
They do, okay. So I guess we're being told that they do have a demolition permit.
That's a question for the building, if you call the building department, the building commissioner?
I'm told that 7 o'clock is the starting time.
Okay. All right, so.
We have some, some notes as well, Mr. Chair.
I just seem to forget these notes. All right, so, peer review funds, we have a concern here as well. There are four peer review contracts.
So this, so I'm, I'm sorry.
No, no, don't be sorry.
So on, on, this, this application went first last time, and so, um, the, the discussion didn't get to kind of working out the peer review contracts. But now the peer reviewers have been identified. And so what's needed now, you had, the board had authorized moving forward, the town to move forward with the contracts for the other application, but not for this one. So if the board could authorize, you know, the town administrator's office to enter into contracts on behalf, um, and then similarly ask for deposits to the peer review, that would be helpful. Um, to the extent that there may be any questions about the scope, the, the staff, and I'm working very closely with, um, Michelle and the town administrator's office, is happy to talk with and work through, just like with the other applicant, work through the scope with the applicants. But for, for now, we just need the board to authorize entering into the contracts and requesting funding so that the traffic engineer can be prepared, or for your next hearing.
Well, they've already paid the traffic review.
No, 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 that was the other application. That was the other one.
I'm sorry.
Oh.
I'm looking at the wrong one.
Page two.
Okay, here we are. So just for consistency, we probably ought to require them to do the same thing, where at least on the others, maybe, maybe traffic, if they already have it done, they pay for that one, but the third on all the others upfront?
Right, and then if they have any questions about the scope of the contracts, then we can work that out the way we discussed with the other applicant.
Uh, yeah, the, the only difference on this one.
Nothing to be paid, I don't, I just got clarified.
Is the environmental included in the civil engineering review?
No, so there, there's not, this, this, um, this list does not include the environmental. I know the assistant town administrator did get a proposal, um, but wanted to also discuss that with the applicant's council as well, before that one moved forward.
Seems like that's, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
Very, uh, big concern right now.
Yeah, I, I think just the recommendation for tonight are these four. And then if, as I mentioned to the board, I'll look into more into what's going on with the environmental. I'll speak to the council about it, and then we'll, I'll report back to the board at the next meeting.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion, gentlemen, I, I can't make it.
Yeah. Are we making a motion to approve the four contracts?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the four proposals that were, uh, submitted by NICH, uh, including traffic, civil engineering, stormwater, water and sewer.
Water and sewer, STANTEC.
STANTEC. Water and sewer.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. All right. Um, are we going to place a requirement that they pay the one-third or?
On the, on the traffic, I think they can, they can provide the full amount, correct? And then the, uh, I think we, we approved the, the contract. I'm not, are we negotiating later with, uh, with, with the fees as might, they might change accordingly?
Yeah, well, because the fees are only for all the peer reviewer estimates. They're estimates, so they could be less, they could be more, you know, it depends on how the course of the review goes. So I think what, if, if the board wanted to be consistent, then you could, you know, request that the traffic review be paid and that the others be the one-third.
Similar, yeah.
I would prefer consistency, gentlemen.
Yeah, I, I agree. That's, so we'll, we'll request the full payment on the traffic and one-third of the remaining contract as the first step.
Is that a motion?
Yes, a motion.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have that. All right, is there any other business that we need to address on this, gentlemen?
Oh, we need to, on this one?
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
All right, what are you talking about, the administrative?
No, I'm, we need to, motion to continue on this.
Oh, yes, I'm not there yet. Um, but I just wonder if there's anything else we need to discuss on this.
No.
Council, is there anything we need to know on this?
Um, not at this time, Mr. Chair.
And petitioner's council, is there anything else you'd like to address with us before we decide to continue this?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right, October 30th at 6 o'clock at Town Hall with work?
Yes.
Traffic.
For traffic, we're going to have traffic, and by then, because you guys already have yours, we've already engaged, uh, we're going to engage ours, and by the 30th, they should have their report, a full report by then. So they can answer some of those concerns. That gentleman's concern about lights shining on his home on the en, entrance, that might be more about the definitive plan itself, more so than traffic, but.
Planting.
Yeah, so, anyway, um, I'll entertain a motion to continue this matter to October 30th at Town Hall at 6 o'clock PM.
I make a motion that we continue comprehensive permit ZCMP-25-2 to October 30th at 6 o'clock PM at Town Hall.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. All right, moving on to the administrative portion of tonight's meeting. First matter we have on is review and approval of administrative minutes of August 27, 2025. I have no comments, gentlemen.
I have no comments, Mr. Chair.
I have no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Faria?
I have none.
All right.
Uh, make a motion, we approve the, um, review of the administrative minutes of August 27, 2025.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Review and approval of comprehensive permit ZCMP-25-2 minutes of August 27, 2025 regarding 498 Old Westport Road.
I have nothing to add.
I have no comments, Mr. Chair.
Me either. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the comprehensive permit Z, ZCMP-25-2 minutes of August 27, 2025 for 498 Old Westport Road.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Next is review and approval of comprehensive permit ZCMP-25-1 minutes of August 27th regarding 970 Tucker Road.
I have no comments, Mr. Chair.
I have no comments.
Terry Faria?
I have no, none.
All right.
Make a motion that we approve the comprehensive permit minutes of, permit ZCMP-25-1 of August 27, 2025 for 970 Tucker Road.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Next is review and approval of administrative minutes of September 10, 2025. I have no comments.
I have no comments.
Sorry, Faria?
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I make, you want me to make it? I make a motion that we approve the, uh, minutes of September 10, 2025, the administrative minutes. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Next and last is review and approval of ZAV-25-4 minutes of September 10, 2025 regarding 25 Thatcher Street.
I have no comments, Mr. Chair.
I have no comments.
Neither do I.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of Z, of, uh, the meeting of ZAV-